All right, well, welcome everyone to our Committee of the Whole for February 20th. I just want to start by acknowledging that we're holding this meeting on the traditional territory of the Coast and Straits Salish peoples, specifically Lakungan-speaking people known today as the Songhees in the Esqai Malt First Nation, and that their connections to this land continues to this day. And also want to remind people that this meeting is livestreamed, and the video is also archived on the website for future viewing. So if you're coming forward at any point to speak, you will be captured in that process. Just for those who attend different meetings, this is a committee of the whole, so we're sitting as committee, not as council. So we won't be making any decisions tonight, but we may at various times give direction to staff or make recommendations to council, sitting ourselves sitting as council, to make some changes in future. And I will be inviting members of the public to come forward through the meeting. There aren't a lot here tonight, but we'll just try and keep those, you're welcome to come in. I'll do that at every stage, so as we talk to each point, we'll invite people to come forward after we've had our committees had a chance to have discussion. Also, just want to let people know our Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Varela, is running late. One minute, it's really hardly worth even commenting on it, actually. Now, it's just, it's like I highlighted it. So you're actually 13 minutes early, because that was the worst-case scenario provided to me. So with that, we're just gonna get right to things. We have 14 items on the agenda tonight, and we'll try and get through them in a reasonably expedient fashion. First up, we just have a summary of changes to the financial plan. We've had a number of meetings so far, and I'll welcome Mr. Payne here to give an overview.
Thank you, your worship, and I'll begin by noting that I believe our audience total has doubled over the course of the last two weeks. But no, we're delighted to be here today, and we'll provide a summary and overview of the financial plan as it's been amended slightly since the last couple meetings. So I'll first begin by talking about the agenda. We plan to go on a high level, an overview of the financial plan, and much of the information council has seen, but we'll review it for the benefit of the audience. We'll talk about budget principles, the timeline, we'll have a look at the consolidated draft budget, and then we are going to discuss the budget questionnaire summary, and my colleague is here to discuss that. We'll have a conversation of recommendations resulting from the Community Climate Action Working Group, the great folks of the Greater Victoria Public Library here, as are the South Island Prosperity Project folks. And then we'll get into the capital budgets. And the flow of the capital budgets could be quite a bit different, depending on how many questions the audience and council has. Generally, what we'll do is we'll go project by project. However, I'm going to read council and read the room and carry on through the projects unless interrupted. Now, there are a couple major projects which we have deliberately planned to pause, and there's a couple staff reports to discuss those in more detail. So we'll talk about asset management, our debt, and our reserves, and we'll go into all of the capital budgets. So reiterating our budget principles for council and the public, we are preparing as best as possible a five-year financial plan, and therefore years 20, '20 and '21 are very important for council to scrutinize and be in support of the final product, whatever the final product may be. This will support continuation of operations through January 1st of next year, before we begin to deliberate on the next financial plan. So projects that were approved in 2019 have carried over to 2020, and projects that are approved in 2020 will carry over to 2021 if they're not complete within that year. Funding strategy has changed slightly. The major pivot that we've done is we are now funding special projects, so one-time projects, through accumulated surplus. So when council considers those special initiatives, removing or adding those initiatives don't have a tax impact, direct tax impact, however, our accumulated surplus fund is finite. So the more we add, the less money we have in the bank, essentially. We're also ensuring that we're incorporating the principles of lifecycle costing, and this version should be the first version where council can see evidence of that. There's a section in the financial plan that's entitled "Operating Impact of Capital Purchases," and it attempts to demonstrate for council what the lifecycle costs of those are. Mind you, we will have a better look at that at the next meeting at March 12th. We're really waiting for some additional analysis that's being done on the Carnarvon Building, for instance, which is a major piece of new capital, and we'll be able to highlight on a high level what we believe the full lifecycle costs of that decision will be for council. We're doing the best that we can to improve financial plan transparency in every area, and the financial plan really does have a long-term vision as much as possible within the five-year plan. So reiterating for the audience and for council, how do things appear in the budget? They appear through council-approved service levels, and although we don't have any formal service levels that have been adopted by council, there are some, and there is an indication of what the community expectation service levels are and what council's expectation for service levels are. We essentially assume that the previous year delivery of services will continue, and we simply bring forward the budget to support those services. The second way that things appear in the financial plan is through council-directed initiatives, and a lot of those initiatives have come through our strategic planning sessions and council priority sessions, and they appear in the way of one-time special initiatives or actual impact to ongoing operating. And lastly, the staff interpretation of action needed to implement council-endorsed plans. So council considers many different plans, many different master plans, and staff bring forward the financial implications of implementing those plans in the draft financial plan. So the assumption here is that staff don't unilaterally increase service levels or decrease service levels in the financial plan. We look to council for direction on that. And again, we presume that the service levels that were approved last year will continue in this year unless we hear differently from council. As mentioned by the Chair, public input is welcome at every stage, and not just in-person in this meeting, but through all other mediums, media, pardon me. Right now, we've attempted to prepare an entire draft financial plan for council consideration so that council can make decisions in that context rather than building it from the ground up. So the package you have before you is what staff believe are the implementation of council direction in its entirety, and then council is more than able to adjust that as we go along. Staff will be looking for council direction, not councillor direction, and so if there are amendments needed and desired by council in the financial plan, we'll look for motions to actually do that at this committee, and those motions will be, those resolutions will be reflected in the final financial plan product. We're careful to ensure that there's, careful version control, this is version three, and there will be at least one more version, probably two more versions before we're up. Version four will be before council, March 12th, and then if council at the March 12th meeting decides to adjust the financial plan, the final version will be thereafter. The timeline that we're looking at right now, we're into our third meeting, we're into the capital budget, February 20th, March 12th is the next one, which is a good three weeks away, I believe. So that will really give staff an opportunity to really refine and produce a final financial plan or close to as final as needed. And then shortly after that, we'll have final bylaw adoption, which is a highly summarized version of the financial plan document. It's just a formalized expenditure authority in the bylaw. Just a reminder, the council decision-making occurs at every stage during the present, the budget presentation. So now's a good a time as any if council has any clear direction, but we can absolutely wait till March 12th as well. So a quick overview of the financial plan, we won't go into detail since we've already been through our operating budget deliberations over the last two meetings. A five-year operating expenditure projection is $220 million, and the capital expenditure projection is $69 million. $16 million of that is contingent on grant funding, and that relates to the Upland Sewer Separation Project, which a grant funding application has been submitted recently. $5 million of that, $69 million expenditures is from borrowing, that relates to your Carnarvon Park building, and $48 million of that is in reserves. So we'll talk about, usually I pause here with council and the public and say, oh, that's a lot of money spending out of reserves, $48 million over five years, and I provide a forecast of what our reserve balances will look like over the five years if this financial plan is adopted in its entirety. And we'll talk more about that in the coming slides after, when we get to asset management. So the overall tax impact that we're looking at right now for 2020 is an 8% tax increase, and a number of tax increases after that. I believe the overall average for the five years is about 4.34%. The impact to median residential property in 2020 would be approximately $240, and the average impact to the median residential property over the five years would be $185 every single year. So that's the, that's the average. And this is what the tax increase as proposed now is composed of. 2.59% of that is forced growth, which is pretty well in line with what you would expect from forced growth, inflationary factors, collective agreement increases, contractual increases. There's a 3% funding lift for infrastructure funding, infrastructure asset management replacement. 2.3% of that is new staffing, that's composed of a number of positions council's been made aware of through the process. 0.14% of that is for urban forest management strategy implementation. There's other, there's other impacts integrated into the five-year forecast that results from council direction through the process. Some of them, for instance, being the short-term rental enforcement in 2020. So that's a 0.19% increase for a half FT by law enforcement for short-term rental, and very, very minor increase for the lifecycle costs related to electric vehicle stations in 2021.04%. One thing that hasn't been quantified, and we've deliberately noted it here and in the financial plan that council needs to be aware of, that if a new service level is determined for community recycling bins, that will certainly have an operating impact. We don't know what that is right now, there's a lot of variables to consider. So it will change the big picture once that information becomes available if council chooses to proceed with that. So as I mentioned, my colleague here is, is here to present the results of the budget questionnaire. Before proceeding with that, ask the Chair if there's any questions.
I don't see anybody raising their hand, so I'll keep going. Oh, councillor, no? Okay, people stretching, okay, we're good. Mr. Payne, go ahead. Oh, Ms. Bay, welcome.
Thank you, your worship. With respect to the budget questionnaire, we had it up and running from mid-January. It closed last week. It's been a bit of a scramble to process the results and get it before you here today. It's 322 responses that we got to it, and we thought it was important to get it to you and to the public as quickly as possible so that you could consider it throughout this budget process. We had, as I mentioned, a really good response. I think with 322 responses, that compares to 95 the last time we did it, a year ago. Used a slightly different platform this time around, and I think is working well. Certainly got some feedback through this process that it was appreciated, that we were reaching out in this way, and I think learned some, some good lessons from this exercise that we can apply in future years to make it even better and even, even more comprehensive by providing additional background information and making some tweaks to, to some of how we're asking the questions. But in terms of the actual feedback that we got back, I think very positive feedback in that I think the majority of responses were indicating that most people were quite happy with the level of services that were being offered by the district. No one was asking, well, I shouldn't say no one, but there is no question for which the majority responses were that there was a desire for a decrease in level of services. There were a handful of services where there was a strong indication of a desire for increased services, and I've noted those in the report. I think interesting to note that the feedback that we got through the questionnaire was very similar to what we heard through the Fall Committee of the Whole workshops. So I think certainly there's consistency in the type of feedback that's being provided. And because of that consistency, because the draft budget actually responded to some of what we were hearing through those Fall Committee of the Whole sessions, the budget that's before you actually incorporates significant action in response to those five levels or five services for which there was a desire expressed for increased services. So I've noted in the report before you how the budget, the draft budget responds to each of those services, and council can then now referencing the questionnaire responses determine whether the, the level of response that's provided for in the budget is deemed sufficient. There's significant comments that were provided by residents. I think the summary was in excess of 100 pages, and so certainly, I've read through all the comments, and I've forwarded the, the report to, to my colleagues and encouraged them to take a look at the responses as well in relation to the services that, that they're offering. But there's lots of, lots of food for thought in there that I know will be, be helpful to, to us as we, as we move forward. That, your worship, that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bay, yes. And I appreciate the careful attention to calling it a questionnaire and not a survey. It's not significantly, statistically significant, but, but still interesting, very similar to when we invite the public to come to this table and, and make comments. So the, the long list of comments is actually quite meaningful to, I think, to this body. Is there any questions, Ms. Bay, on this document? From council or committee? No? Is anybody from the audience who wishes to talk to the Nope, nobody coming back. So back to this table, we have a recommended motion here.
Excuse me, I'm happy to make the motion. I think, I think the questionnaire was very helpful for the community to, to participate in.
Moved and seconded. Any of the discussion, seeing none, all is in favor, opposed, not opposed. Thank you very much, Ms. Bay. I'm just procedurally here, just noticing we have a couple of presenters here in the audience of the library and the South Island Prosperity Project. Are we allowed to adjust our agenda on the fly a little bit to move them forward? Is, is council willing to do so? Okay, let's do that. Let's just deal with those two things first. So up next, then we will have the Greater Victoria Public Library, should know that name well. And I will just invite you to come up to the microphone, and the floor is yours. You can just introduce yourself, and thank you very much for coming.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Murdoch and council members and staff. Thank you very much for inviting us to present our 2020 final budget. My name is Deborah Begore, and I'm the Chair of the Greater Victoria Public Library Board, and very proud to be in that position. I'm also a citizen representative for the City of Victoria on that board. And with me to present today is Maureen Sawa, who's our CEO, and our Director of Finance and Facilities, Paul McKinnon. I'm also pleased to introduce GVPL's Board Vice Chair, Councillor Andy McKinnon. Give us a wave, Andy. Councillor McKinnon is our municipal representative for the District of Machosen, and he tells me it's a long ways from Machosen to Oak I'd also like to recognize Councillor Andrew Appleton, who's your council representative on the Greater Victoria Public Library Board, and we're very happy to have his input. The commitment of all our board councillor representatives to represent their constituents across GVPL's 10-member municipalities is very significant, and certainly as a citizen representative, I admire their dedication, and I always learn things from them and their insights. Public libraries, as I hope you agree, provide a place where every citizen can belong. The Greater Victoria Public Library Board is committed to working with all of our municipal partners so that we can build inclusive and diverse communities. By providing citizens with equitable access to information, services, and resources, we hope that we make it possible for everyone to grow and to learn. You've received our final budget package. The library board and staff have worked hard to develop a budget for 2020 that's realistic and also resourceful. So on behalf of the library board, our staff and the community we serve, I'd really like to express my thanks to council for your support and your continuing support. We're very proud of the work we do, and we certainly appreciate your recognition that libraries do indeed change lives. So now it's my pleasure to turn things over to Maureen and to Paul, and we look forward to responding to any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Sawa.
Thank you, and thank you, Deborah, and thank you, everyone. It's always a pleasure to be back in Oak Bay. Seems like just a minute ago, we were here for last year's budget, but it's a wonderful opportunity for us to update you on what the library's been doing in terms of achievements and the work we do for our community. As Deborah mentioned, and I always feel compelled to point this out at the beginning, Greater Victoria Public Library is a shared service model. We're supported by 10 individual municipalities serving almost 350,000 citizens. As a result, each individual municipality enjoys a level of library service normally associated with much larger urban centers. With the combined contributions of 10 municipalities, the whole is indeed greater than the sum of its parts. And the Oak Bay branch is a terrific example of how we leverage not only our shared service model, but the sharing of our physical footprint with key community contributors such as the Monterey Centre. As Deborah has stated, GVPL builds community. We are your place to connect, discover, and imagine. So we're coming to the end of our current strategic plan. As you may recall, we've talked about this in previous years. Just as the District of Oak Bay's corporate plan and official community plan guides all that you do, so has our GVPL strategic plan guided the work that we do. We've succeeded in delivering on all of our strategic priorities, all of which enhance provincial and municipal goals. Last year, we commissioned a perception study of our system, and I just want to remind you of the results. This is a, this is a perception study that is research that we contracted out for Just Asin Market Intelligence Incorporated, and our intention is to do this survey study every two years. It's the, so this was the first one that we did. And it does kind of take a tally on what residents think across our 10-member municipalities about GVPL. And as you can see, the numbers are quite, are quite significant. Nearly 95% residents in the service area agree that GVPL is important to lifelong learning for people of all ages. 94% agree that it contributes to the well-being of people in the community, and so on. Perception, though, is one thing, and I just want to remind you of some facts. GVPL continues to rank among the highest circulation per capita systems of comparable Canadian urban public library systems. And here in Oak Bay, I just wanted to point out to you that about 50% of your children participated in the Summer Reading Club program last year. In 2019, a record 9,052 children across the area participated in the Summer Reading Club, which is really quite astounding. More than 1,000 Books for Babies kits were distributed to families with newborns in our service areas. And this is a program, if you're not familiar with Books for Babies, it's a delivery program for board books and literacy information for new parents in the area. We've been very well supported by a literacy grant from the Times Colonist, and we just received last week a contribution from the Times Colonist of $20,000 to make it possible for us to deliver that program. And my staff wanted you all to know here in Oak Bay that our family story times at the Oak Bay Branch have been such a success that we've actually had to add on to them because the waiting list is so long. So it's just fascinating, the family use of our branches here. So our first strategic priority is creativity, creating great spaces and opportunities for nurturing and support arts, culture, and creativity. I wanted to let you know that at the Oak Bay Branch itself, in terms of its physical imprint, and Paul can speak to this a little bit later, we have made a number of improvements to lighting, just as you've done here. It's a much brighter space. Our integrated service point has made it possible for us to have more room for displays, timely displays of materials, which is very popular, and we're continuing to make space planning improvements. And the community of our Oak Bay Branch is extremely engaged, and I have to tell you that many of the changes that we've made recently were directly as a result of citizen input. So this is, this is terrific that there's such an engaged community. We also partnered with Oak Bay Parks Recreation and Culture to host the Oak Bay Arts Alive Guided Public Sculpture Walking Tour, which, as you know, was led by local poets for inspirational walks throughout the neighborhood sculptures. So lots and lots of cooperative programming. Our second key strategic goal for the library was to inspire discovery through programs, collections, and services that enhance literacy and lifelong learning. And as you can see, this is a picture of a program that took place in the Monterey Centre. At the Oak Bay Branch, health and wellness programming sought to enhance quality of life and reduce isolation with seniors' resource information sessions and community connections, and information tables on topics such as childcare resources and referral councils. Also, a lot of multi-generational programming takes place. The third, you know, strategic priority for the library is to engage passionate library members, funders, and partners to expand the library's reach and impact. We have been very successful in developing kits. For example, the picture you see here is our newcomers' kit. We also have outreach kits for pop-up libraries. And at Oak Bay, over 4,000 library members engaged with the library at 37 community outreach programs this past year, and pop-up libraries, including the Oak Bay Tea Party, the Oak Bay Night Market, and Halloween on the Avenue. And we visited 26 classes at five schools, so we've been very, very busy. The programming partnership with the Oak Bay Archives brought talks to the library on such distinctly Oak Bay topics as a heritage neighborhood, the story of Oak Bay's St. Patrick's Street, and the photographs of Frank Burrell, images from an Oak Bay family's album, to name just two of the programs that we've done. So we really get a lot going in Oak Bay. Finally, we're very committed to leadership, both in the community and professionally. And this is a picture, you can see Deborah in here. We were honored last year by the American Library Association with an award called the John Cotton Dana Award, which is for distinguished public relations and community outreach. And some of you may be aware of our Change Your Mind campaign. So this was staff and the board chair receiving the award. We spoke, the conference took place in Washington DC, and staff from GVPL were also invited to do a presentation on the work we've done with developing our librarian role. This same program has been presented at the Pacific Northwest Library Association Conference last year in Spokane, Washington. And we also were invited to speak at the Ontario Library Association. Last year was quite an amazing year in terms of recognizing the work that GVPL does locally and the influence that we've had on our peers across Canada and the United States. As mentioned, Oak Bay participation in the Summer Reading Club was one of the highest in the entire system. Here's some numbers for you. I want to just point out that you may be aware of the flood that occurred at the Centennial Branch in August. That branch has been closed since that time. We are going to be reopening at the end of March. We have been providing a pop-up library and Perks Recreation Centre, but it has had an, in fact, it has had an impact on our circulation figures. So I, it's just caveat in terms of the numbers that we have noted here, because I was, I was a very busy branch. But certainly in terms of the numbers that Oak Bay has delivered, Oak Bay Branch is ranked, wait for it, number two in total in-person branch visits for our 10, our 12-branch system, and that represents 12.4% of the system's activity. And, I love this one, Oak Bay last year was ranked number one for the number of holds filled. So if any of you have used our hold system, you know how convenient and, and popular that is. And so there were about 180,000 holds filled for Oak Bay residents this, this past year. You read a lot, and so, and that also means that Oak Bay is number three in terms of circulation. So we are, you are, you are really helping us keep that number one rating in terms of per capita.
That's 10 per person.
It's a lot, I know. I was amazed, especially the holds. Wow, that's, that's pretty good. And I have to say, a bit of a shout-out for our collection staff, because the fact that we are so successful with our holds means that, and I do this too, like if you hear about a book on CBC, you know, your tendency is, I want to put a hold on it. And the fact that pretty well every time that happens, you can count on that book either being on the shelf or on order, that is just a terrific, you know, compliment to our selection staff. So the other thing that's interesting is in terms of public computer session bookings, Oak Bay residents account for the third highest number of sessions booked in the system for our public computers. So now, we have had some changes in methodology and collecting our user statistics, so some of these numbers are still, I'd say, not quite, quite definitive, but the rankings are. So I think it's really, really significant that Oak Bay is ranking as high I think it's really, really significant that Oak Bay is ranking as high as it is. So in terms of the budget requests for 2020, as Deborah said, you have your package of material. GVPL has an excellent fiscal track record of continuously improving services by responding to increasing and changing service demands while controlling costs through the implementation of efficiencies, innovation, and new technology. As any of you who have been on the library board or are familiar with the library board proceedings, we have a finance committee of the board that is extremely scrupulous in its review of our budget. As Paul can tell you, we have numerous meetings before it goes to the board as a whole for approval. So I think we feel very confident that the 2020 budget is a reasonable and responsible funding request necessary to maintain existing services and service levels. To sustain our level of service this year and meet increasing and changing service demands, the overall municipal contribution increase requested for 2020 is 3.90%. Now, how that translates for the Oak Bay 2020 contribution, the share of the 2020 requisition is 6.65% of the whole, which represents a per-capita increase this year of 45 cents. The total amount is $1,197,358, which is based on converted assessment values and population of the municipality, including rental adjustment. And we can speak to that at the end of this presentation. Looking back, some familiar faces holding our library cards. 2019 was a very exciting year, full of surprises, both from the awards recognition and all the successful programming, but also how staff dealt with such challenges as the flood at Centennial Branch at the end of August. One thing I should mention is, we did make a note of it in our package, we did have a very successful campaign to lobby for increased provincial funding for public libraries. And as you know, we did not see any increase this year, but we also maintained our current state, which, from what I gather, was an achievement. And we are looking forward to continuing the campaign through in this year to continue to work with our provincial funders. This is one of my favorite images from 2019. This was a spring break Bollywood dance workshop that we did back for March break. To me, this moment captures all the joy and hope of looking ahead to the future. So what does the future hold? In terms of Oak Bay, we are continuing to plan on further kind of enhancements to the physical space, generate more programming. As you know, as living spaces become smaller, the library plays an increasingly important role as the living room of the community. So we do have some interesting plans for enhanced space planning. Also, we are just in the process of receiving the completed master plan, facilities' master plan update. You may recall that there was a master plan for facilities for the library that was prepared 10 years ago, almost 10 years ago. And so it's been updated, and certainly Oak Bay is a key focus of this update in terms of potential changes that could be done to the branch. So we look forward to that, and I always like to end with a quote. This one, "The health of our civilization, the depth of our awareness about the underpinnings of our culture, and our concern for the future can all be tested by how well we support our libraries." Great Carl Sagan said that. But the other thing that Deborah and I wanted to share with you is at the UBCM conference last year, the Union of BC Municipalities, we actually participated in a clinic called Libraries Build Resilient Communities. And one of our other trustees, Matt Boyd, made the wonderful comment about the importance of libraries. And he said that, "I take my kids to the library to give them experience outside their bubble, but most importantly," he said, "it is the only place that we can go where, when they ask for more, I can always say yes." And when you think about what that means to members of our community, they can always say yes at the library. I think it's wonderful that we're able to support such a great system. So I'd like to thank you and just end with a final note. Strong communities need strong libraries, and that is fact, not fiction. Thank you very much. And now, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Masawa. Questions, Councilor Breathwaite and Councilor Appleton, I'm assuming you wanted to... Okay, you can wrap up. Sounds good.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and it's great to know that we're in the top three for all of those categories that you talked about. So we do love our books here in Oak Bay. I just have a quick question in regards to the slides that you had on the 2020 budget request. Just two, I think, two areas.
That one, or the other one?
The other one. Yeah, that one. The salaries and benefits has a big change. If you could talk about that and how that compares to what happened last year, because I can't remember last year what that figure was. And the, what was the other one I wanted? The supplies, services, and other.
Right. Okay, this is the part that I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
Welcome, Mr. McKinnon.
Thank you very much, through the Chair. With regards to salaries and so forth, obviously, we're bound by the same things in terms of the District of Oak Bay, in terms of contractual agreements and KPI-related increases with regards to the contract and other CPI increases. But as Maureen indicated in the early part of her budget discussions, we're really faced with a challenge within the system of being able to maintain and increase services. The representation from a labor perspective is really that. It's us maintaining our services, but also building with the region. So if we look at population growth in the region, which our assessments are based on, we've seen quite a significant increase in the population estimates that we use at GVPL to calculate our assessments. So, for example, we were basing our assessments on 327,000 persons within our funding area on the previous budget. We're now up to 346,000. The average population increase across the board is between 5% and 6%. So in order for GVPL to keep up with that, we are having to add staff in key areas such as frontline services with regards to the delivery of specific library service and support staff in the back. So this is what that's representing this year.
Thank you so much. And I think that, I mean, when I look at the per-capita increase of the 45 cents, I mean, that's very minimal, I think, for us, for the service that we're getting. So, thank you.
Counselor Green, and then Counselor Ne.
Through you, Chair. Thank you very much, Masawa, and your team. I think I know why there's such a high number of people using the computers at our library. They're all writing letters to this mayor and council. I'm sure that's what it is. I just want to congratulate you. This is always a good news story in Oak Bay, the whole library function. And I have no questions, other than to say thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ne.
Yeah, it's always good to see you guys. It is such a good service for our community. The number of books and the responsiveness to people's requests is quite remarkable. So really appreciate the leadership you bring to this program. The question I have, just for the benefit of those listening and in the audience, could you explain for us the way the fees are, or our contribution to the operating costs are based on our assessment values, our property assessment value and population? And, you know, here, of course, our circumstances are that property values are probably going up quite a bit disproportionate to other communities. I'm just wondering how that's dealt with, how it's justified, if you could explain that.
Sure. The formula is one that is consistent. And again, I'm going to turn it over to Paul because he explains numbers way more succinctly than I can. Yeah.
Thank you, Maureen. So a little bit of history on the requisition formula, in that it is very similar to the CRD formula and the formula used in other districts with regards to assessment and population. The light end of it, it's 50% based on assessment in terms of tax assessment, and 50% on population and the ratio between those two. The easiest way I find to explain this is that if there was a zero increase on our budget because of regional differences and throughout the region with regards to task assessment and population, Oak Bay could see an increase or a decrease based on their position relative to the other municipalities within the district. This particular year, it was in Oak Bay's favor, to be honest. The increase here was fairly minimal, and that was due in large part to higher population growth and assessment growth in West Shore. If you recall, the prior year, Oak Bay saw nearly a 10% increase, and that was due to historical increases in assessments that we were seeing in Oak Bay at the time. So it does fluctuate year by year, depending on what the region as a whole is doing. So if you look at the growth in each particular area, it can shift or pull our requisition formulas across the board.
Just one more. Thank you very much. One more question, Mr. Mayor. The other thing is, in our community, as you've already pointed out, our library is used a lot, and it's quite a tight area. And one of the things I hear from people in our community is sort of the tension of different users, the young kids and other places to use it. And I know that your vision of libraries are, you know, to fulfill a resilient community and to be a space, a public space. So I'm just wondering if you could comment on, in terms of our space, that's an asset that belongs to, and is the responsibility of Oak Bay. But I'm just wondering, in terms of future visioning about that space, what you may have to say about that.
Yeah, definitely. And we are aware that there are multi-generational users in the branch, and one of the things that we were looking forward to doing this year is doing further work with, you know, shelving and space planning and things. But quite frankly, the master facilities plan, the consultant's report that will be available within the next month or so, Oak Bay, it has been noted as very much needing more space, space that is more functional to address just what you've said. And it's difficult right now in the existing footprint to do a lot more without a pretty significant investment, which is something that I think we'll be talking to you about, because it continues to increase in terms of busyness and usage. And I know Paul and his staff and our library services staff, both from a facilities planning perspective and a service planning perspective, there's only so much we can do within that footprint. So definitely, when we will be making presentations to all of our member municipalities to share the recommendations that are coming through from the consultants once the board has approved them, and there will be an opportunity to talk about the Oak Bay branch. But you may recall from the 2010 master plan for facilities, Oak Bay was cited as high on the list of needing either replacement or significant work. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? I just have one quick question to Mr. McKinnon, and that's just the use of the term, sorry, under the budget at a glance note to the amortization. This says the total increase is net of amortization. Can you just explain the use of the term amortization in that framework?
Absolutely. So as per PISAP, so Public Standard Accounting, in terms of how this is presented, amortization is an unfunded expense. So essentially, we have the expense within, the easiest way to describe it is the expense is included, but then we back it back out again. So net of amortization in terms of that increase.
That's what it looked like. Just wanted to confirm. Actually, that was good. Not seeing any other... Oh, Counselor Zelka.
I wanted to ask a potential indulgence of the mayor and seeing whether this is appropriate or not. But I do note that in the collections of the Greater Victoria Public Library, the Oak Bay Official Community Plan is dated 1997 and is now rather out of doubt. I'm wondering if it might be appropriate at some appropriate time, hopefully soon, for us to donate to their collection at some point.
They would have to buy it from us, I think, if that would work.
Well, so, really, 1997, okay. I will follow up on that.
All right, thanks, Masawa.
Whoops.
Thank you, worship, and through you. Thank you very much for coming, Deborah, Maureen, Paul, and Andy. We very much appreciate your time. It is my great pleasure and privilege to act as Oak Bay's library board trustee. It is, as I think council is well-aware, an extremely high-functioning and a very, very, very positive environment to be in. What I will say is, you have heard, as council and members of the public have heard, a lot of the successes of the library board system, and you can see how high-functioning it is. You can see how successful it is and how well-subscribed it is, how well-appreciated it is. It would be very easy in that context for this library board, staff, and just the collective group to rest on their laurels and to be thinking about just maintaining such a high level of service. That is not where this group is at. This is an exceedingly strategic and forward-thinking group. This is a group thinking well down the road to what libraries will become and how to modernize and how to make them increasingly more relevant in a time where people will sometimes question what the value of a library is. So I would just like to bring to council's attention how revolutionary and how strategic this group is and how positive I feel that is. So, and I think an indicator of that is, Maureen mentioned the John Cotton Dana Award, which is a huge recognition in and of itself. What needs to be underlined there is that was, all the content that won that award was developed by staff, by the staff of the library board internally. This was not a sort of a high-priced consultant or something brought in to do that work. That was all done internally by the staff. And I think that in and of itself is just a really good indicator of the capacity of this group. So I can say with absolute confidence that council should be aware that this is a library board and a group of staff and a group of individuals that is thinking very, very strongly about where the system is headed and how to make an excellent system even better. So I'm very, very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. We don't really need a motion on this. We're just receiving this. It goes as part of our agenda package and as part of our budget currently. So let me just say thank you very much for coming out today and answering questions. I think it was, as you can hear, a lot of support here at the table for all the work that gets done. And I will reiterate that. I just want to express my appreciation for the amount of work that goes in from the board and of staff to bring a reasonable budget and an excellent service to our community.
Well, thank you very much, and we really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening. And next up, we have the South Island Prosperity Project. Before we cycle back to item number three. That's a good spot.
I'm here today. It's kind of cool that you're all in a very supportive mood tonight. That's what we always want to hear. Makes me very happy. Great to see the library here, who are actually one of our newest members of the South Island Prosperity Partnership, which became our name earlier on this year. That's a bit of a logo soup for you right there to see who our members are. Now, we're up to 63 members. When we started three and a half years ago, we had 27. So we've grown the membership quite significantly in that period of time. And among the notable additions to our membership in the past short while is the District of Suk has joined us. Counselor McKinnon is on his way out. McChosen is still in consideration of membership, and getting them on board would give us 12 of the 13 municipalities in the region. There will never be 13 in the organization. We will probably stop at 12. That's the way that will go as we go forward. You will see that we have all nine of the Coast Salish First Nations as members of our organization right now, too. So I will join your earlier sentiment in recognizing that we're gathered on the ancestral territories of the Coast Salish people. We've been very proud of working with them and very honored to do that. And I'm going to give you a bit of an outline on some things that we did in particular with the nations over the last year. I just wanted to do some measurement for you here of what we've done over the last little while. Number of new businesses attracted to Greater Victoria, which is one of the things that's in our principal operating plan. After year five, we were saying that we would have attracted 10 new businesses here. We're pretty much there now, and this chart is a few months old. So we've kind of blown past that, and we're pretty happy with that. We had a welcoming event about a month ago to welcome the new companies into town that came from Brazil, the United Kingdom, the United States, the Yukon, and the Cowichan Valley, who chose to locate here. So we're very pleased to have them joining us, too. Job growth, we're kind of right on path for that right now. We might be a bit higher of where we thought we would be at the end of year four, which is the end of next month. We are approaching 250 new jobs right now, which, considering the fact that we have the lowest unemployment rate in Canada, we think that that kind of growth is pretty exemplary, and we're very pleased to be able to say that we're on track to keep that growth going, too. We engaged in something called the Trade Accelerator Program, and the TAP program is something that was put in place by the World And the TAP program is something that was put in place by the World Trade Center in Vancouver. They went to chambers of commerce to put this in place. It's basically where we mentor businesses and organizations that have come to a certain point where they want to scale up, but they're not really sure how to do that. They may have reached a valuation of a million bucks, and they're thinking, where do I go? What do I do now? So we help them do that. So in total, over the last little while, we have done pretty close to 50, I think the real number is 47 businesses, but the one that we did last year, for example, among a cohort of 17, we think resulted in them creating 75 new jobs within their organizations as they grew. So that's a really cool deliverable for us. This one has also pretty much already reached that pinnacle that we thought we would be at at year five. We were a part of writing the proposal that got the funding for the Songhees Innovation Center, which is a facility within the Songhees Wellness Center. It's where indigenous business operators can work together in a co-working space, collaborate with each other, talk about business. So there are already 20-plus employees in that space, which has happened in a very short period of time. We're very pleased to have been a part of making that happen, too. And our membership, as I mentioned, we thought we were going to get up to 65 after year five. We're pretty much there now. We're at 63, I believe, as of today. And we have some others to announce shortly that will get us up into that level. So I can, I can tell you that the growth in the past year has included engagement with major financial institutions who have joined us, the banks, the chartered banks have come on board, who of course represent a huge asset in this community and the opportunity for businesses, including First Nation enterprise, to engage with funding models. The library, as we mentioned. Junior Achievement has joined us. If there's one nonprofit that aligns with what economic development does, it's Junior Achievement. So we've brought them in with us as well. The Inter-Cultural Association, as we focus on the role of immigration and growing our work skills and our workforce in the next few years. An organization called the Truffles Group has joined us, as has a group called Mike Garrett Construction. The Island Rail Corridor has joined us, which means that we now have all of the major transportation service providers in the region with us in membership. So whatever may happen, whatever pans out with the province's South Island transportation strategy, all of the players in that are members within our organization, and we can engage them in that dialogue going forward. And we also have a conversation underway to bring all of the regional chambers of commerce in as members, too, which means that they will then have a collective voice to work together, which they may not normally have, without sort of being on somebody else's agenda. It also adds their impact to the voice that we have when we go ask for investment into this region from federal or provincial levels of government. So we think that that's a pretty cool advancement for us, too. The next one there, just indicates the first, so again, we're past that, too. We have all nine nations, the Co-Salish nations are with us. We have a relationship with the Pachydot Nation, too, who are actually not Co-Salish, they are Nuchalneth. But we've brought them into an event that we did back in November, which I want to talk to you about right now. This was, some of you may have seen this presentation before. I did it at the joint council meetings, Mayor, you might remember that. We invited the 10 regional First Nations to join us for a conversation and a summit on economic development. They had never come together as this group to do that before, which we were kind of astounded to hear. They worked together, of course, in, in treaty negotiation and treaty groups, but to come together and talk full up about economic development was not something they had ever done. This is a graphic recorder we had on site to take down words coming out of everyone's mouth. We brought in a woman named Carol Ann Hilton, who is the head of something called the Indigenous Economics Institute. She's an MBA and a business thought leader in the indigenous business sector, who predicts that the economy for indigenous business in Canada is currently at $35 billion. Within five years, it will be $100 billion. Some other things that came out, and I want to mention to you, too, when we did this session, we had hired an indigenous organization to facilitate this for us. Very frank conversations happen when the nations get together and talk about things. So we had counseling on standby, just in case there's something getting very emotional. For example, the top right-hand corner, every time this phrase is said, it reawakens the indigenous child that Johnny McDonald tried to kill. That came out of the mouth of an attendee there, and it's something that's discussed quite often. So when the conversation about the removal of the statue downtown comes up, there you go. That's the reason why. Other points from them, we need an actionable constructive path forward. Look for examples, the Musqueam real estate development is one of them. We must move beyond the negative. We are not statistics, we are not a socioeconomic gap or a problem. We cannot be an economy of social services, don't just fund the problem. One of them made the point that much of the funding that goes into programs in the indigenous sector does just that. It funds problems instead of being pure economic development, which is what they want. Go to the far left, we're different communities and nations, but we all need to work together. They don't aspire to the same things. They don't have the same goals. They don't have the same ambitions. They don't have the same skill sets, frankly. And helping them scale up is part of what we want to do right now. Partnerships that work was another conversation that came up. Some of them would like to get into tourism, as you can see. Lateral opportunities, employees who can work anywhere. I'm going to talk in a second about their opportunity to connect with the economy, but there are some very, very distinct barriers to that happening. Just under the P on the left there, hire from each other's nations to increase capacity. Not a dialogue that happens a great deal right now. And we just anecdotally, we're, we were amazed by the number of people who came to this from the nations who had never met each other before. And this was an opportunity for them to get together and talk about this kind of collaboration. Storytelling, culture, artists, carvers, all of that under the tourism model. When we convene this, once again, we're going to be doing that on a theme of tourism, as well as some other things. The other big thing that happened was them to talk about management and access to capital. One of the elements we did was bring in the financial institutions. We brought the banks and the credit unions into this conversation. We gave them about 90 minutes to just mingle among each other. The relationship between the FIs and the nations has been quite confrontational in the past, as I think all of you know. Access to capital is something that's not always been easy. In the middle there, it's a way of getting out from under the Indian Act. The Indian Act considers all nations the same, doesn't put any distinction in place among them. So needing to do that is something that we talked about, too. Bottom, flexible loans. Meet and plan with what your nation wants. The idea of the First Nations Finance Authority lending to First Nations. Beecher Bay has doubled their property value revenues. First Nations Fiscal Management Act to create all of that outcome. And each nation has a different approach, treaty, no treaty, access to capital. So again, just a, an amazingly fulsome conversation happened. The overriding part of this is the idea of community wellness. Any community, whether it's Oak Bay, whether it is Songhees, whether it's the Chanu Nation, whether it's a country, whether it's a continent, if the wellness is not in place for a culture to be functional and healthy, they cannot achieve their maximum potential. That is something that is very much a problem in many of the First Nations, and they talked about that all the time at this. The reason the Songhees Wellness Center is called the Wellness Center is that it provides lifestyle, it provides mentorship, it provides opportunities to get out of the cycle of poverty that's been there for a long time. Much of this, when the conversation went to the darker side, based a lot of the, of the current challenges on the residential school system, which, when you take a look at it, means that parents were denied the right to parent their own children, children lost the right to be parented by their parents. It broke them. It's still being healed. It's generational. It accounts for things like rampant suicide, drug abuse, alcohol abuse, psychological problems. All of those things systemically go back to that. So they would say things like, we must reframe our thinking from being a problem to being limitless. Sharing and strengthening culture through food, language, hunting ceremonies, fishing, song, dance. Something that came out of a lot of people's mind at this whole gathering was, we only see each other at funerals. They never had any other reason to get together and collaborate. Strong people and strong community, the Songhees Wellness Center and all the elements that they have, like trauma-informed elders lunches, healthy foods. So the distinctness of their culture came out. One of the elements that was a part of our smart city submission to Infrastructure Canada last year, we have extracted and we're going forward with it, it's a micro-transit system for the nations. And in its simplest form, it is an indigenous-owned and operated on-demand transit system. So the nations do not have access to public transit because they don't pay the gas tax. Therefore, BC Transit does not serve these nations. The urban nations are in a circumstance of having access to it, but the more remote ones do not. So if they don't have the capacity to put fuel in a vehicle or someone to drive it, or the means of getting to a bus stop to get to where they need to be, they don't get there, or it's very difficult. There are students that hitchhike to get to a bus stop to go to school. It's not safe, it's not healthy, it's not an inspiration or a motivation to finish. The same with reaching out for health care and not having access to the, to the wireless that we all take for granted is something that's a factor in their lives. So the micro-transit thing, we have a feasibility study underway right now that we're looking for final funding for, which I'm confident we're going to find, to look into that feasibility. And we're very confident that's going to go forward for the nations, to again, connect them, provides employment, too, right? Next steps for these guys, we asked them, do you want a yearly meeting? They said, no, we want to meet quarterly. So I'm now in the process of finding the funding to put that in place to gather them quarterly. Western Economic Diversification will support this. They will match whatever we can find. So we're looking to raise those dollars to put that in place, and we've committed to quarterly events for three years. So this is some stuff just going forward here. We have a newsletter, which some of you may now subscribe to. It has all the spotlights and highlights and things that we're doing. CEO update, which will not be me from this month going forward, and some things that we have upcoming here. A strategic planning process with councils and residents. FDI is foreign direct investment. That's where we speak with organizations and companies about locating here from somewhere else. The province is letting us bring in a party of people from Seattle, who are looking to have a Canadian headquarters in order to reach out to American suppliers in the Cascadia region. So they're coming up here, and we're helping facilitate that. The indigenous mobility pilot I just talked about. Agricultural supply gap projects. We were instrumental in writing a proposal for an RFP to create a food processing hub, which is operating in Vic West right now, and the feasibility of that is going forward. The other thing we're looking for right now is a feasibility study into establishing an abattoir on South Vancouver Island, a slaughterhouse, because we don't have one. So if an animal, a farm animal, is going to be dispatched to become a food source, they put them on a truck, they drive them over the Malahat, they put them on a truck, they put them on a barge, they send them to the Fraser Valley. It's very stressful for the animal for the traveling, the traveling is very stressful, the ending is not good either for them. But we're looking at the possibility and the feasibility of creating that facility here, which we would do in partnership with a First Nation, which means they would get either revenue as the landlord, or they would be the proprietors of it. So we're looking into the feasibility of that, too. Membership growth, we talked about. The investment readiness program is something we're doing right now with the township of Asquimult, who have an economic development plan and strategy, but they don't have the means to enable it. So we're working with them through a consultant to say, there's, here's what you can do, here's what you should do, here's what's going to give you the most effectiveness. There are other municipalities here that also have an economic development strategy without a readiness program or a roadmap that is now scalable to them. So thank you very much for all that you've done to support our organizations. I'll just briefly mention a couple of other things that we're working on. We do something called Indigenous Connect, where we gather indigenous businesses together to talk about their challenges and find mentorship for them, so that that can help them grow a little bit stronger. The welcoming event I mentioned, where we brought the companies in that we had attracted to the country. We're sending a mission, we don't do this very often, but we're in a financial position, fortunately, this year to be able to do it. Two of the companies we've brought in are from Brazil. They've been talking to their counterparts in Brazil, and there are now something in the order of about 12 companies in Brazil that say, we're out of here. We would really like to come to Victoria, British Columbia, to this region for the lifestyle, for the affordability, for the family values. The Portuguese families, Portuguese-speaking families from Brazil that are already here number about 19, 19 to 20, they get together every Sunday, and they go to the Portuguese church service at the church over by the, by the Commonwealth Pool. Then they have a little barbecue after, and then because they're Brazilian, they play soccer. So they do that all the time. So we think there's going to be a growth within that, that multicultural community here. We're very anxious about that, so we're sending a couple of guys down there for a six-day mission to Brazil. The prosperity index, we will launch again. We are looking into working with a government relations firm to help us better understand how we can attract investment from other levels of government. And I think that's about all I have. So we've been busy. But thank you all very much for the support you've shown us in the past year. We're looking forward to working with you in year five. Year five is the final year of the commitment, of course, to this organization and the five-year plan. So as we move through this upcoming fiscal year, we will be coming back to talk about the following five years and what that might look like. We understand that we'll likely align that with an electoral cycle, but just full disclosure, we will, we will be coming back to ask for another five-year commitment, which would be probably two years, followed by three. And at the end of this year, we'll have even more to report back and more successes for you. So just a heads up that we are going to come back for that in the future. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question, Counselor Neen.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation overview, and it's just very fine work that you're doing. It really is. I have to say that I'm most impressed with the partnerships you've developed with our First Nations community. That is really quite remarkable, how you've brought all the, the, the nations around this area together to have these meetings and really starting from the bottom and working forward. I, I'm just wondering, I know you were at the One Planet Conference this morning here, and I'm just wondering, I'm really curious about where this is going, but I guess we'll just have to wait, unless you're prepared to give us any hints. But I'm wondering if you could just speak for a minute about, about how you see the sort of sustainability, One Planet kind of concept, working with economic development as you've laid it out here.
Thank you, through the mayor. Sir. Thank you, through the mayor. It's been identified, of course, that the economy of the world, what we're now calling the green economy, will be the economy. Full stop. It's going to, it's going to be a part of every single thing that we do. We put a climate mitigation statement in our constitution at our AGM last year. So engaging in any, any business that's even now not considered to be green, it will be green. And the ideas that were put forward today at that event, and what we're getting in feedback from all of our members all the time, mitigation of climate change has to happen. We have to take steps to do that. The current model is not sustainable from a planetary point of view. So we intend on doing everything we can to engage business to this region that is of a green nature and do everything we can to support anybody who is trying to make that shift to make themselves more green and more sustainable. So anything that we can do along that line, we will be doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that articulation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counselor Braithwaite?
Thanks so much, through you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation, Bruce. It's been, it's, it's so wonderful to see everything that's been going on, and I've attended some of the events that, that you've been putting on this year, and they're great. I always learn a lot when I walk away from them. I have a question in regards to the number of businesses that you're courting right now to come perhaps to Victoria. Do you have an estimation of that?
On the go in general?
Yeah.
Through the mayor? Well, we have the ones in Brazil, there's others in, the Cascadia Corridor is sort of Washington, Seattle, Portland, and that region, California, Northern California. People much smarter than I are handling that on a daily basis, but I'm going to take a stab at it and say there's probably about 20, 20 to 22 in play right now.
Through you, Chair. That, and that's wonderful news. I mean, when I, I, when you talk to people within the community, they have, as do I, a child who wants to move back to Victoria, and to have those opportunities so that we can have that strong diversified economy, to have those opportunities coming, coming to Victoria is wonderful. So, so thank you for that. And my last question would be, I know that you're stepping aside because the position that you were feeling, the person has come back from maternity leave. So are you staying on with SIP? I'm hoping that they're going to keep you.
That's the plan, yes. And I'll continue on doing an expanded version of what I was doing before that. But thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Counselor Green?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Bruce. That was really excellent, and I'm, I am, I too am very impressed with SIPs. And I see that one, under one of your logos, you have the University of Victoria.
Yes.
My background is, I've had experience in indigenous education in the K-12 system and in the college system. Just wondering, are you working with any Ministry of Education representatives or with schools, school districts? Is that in the future and, and with colleges locally?
Thank you, through the mayor. All three post-secondarys are members of our organization. In fact, the three of them are founding members of who we are. The short answer is no, we're not. We don't have a robust relationship with the province, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I won't speak on their behalf, but as a rule, the province doesn't engage in municipal economic development. They see it as the purview of the federal government and municipalities. Having said that, there are parties and organizations, like an organization called Iced Tea, Island Coastal Economic Trust, which is a fund set up by the province for economic development north of the Malahat. So they do it in that sense, but for a direct infusion of dollars, we're not really aware of a whole lot that the province is doing. Having said that, as I mentioned, we're re-examining our government relations situation right now. We have a small amount of budget to engage professionals in doing that, and that could very well be one of the categories that we speak about, especially when it comes to Indigenous and their access to education in schools. A number of the nations want to build schools because they don't have them. Their youth are spending a long time getting to and from school. It's not easy for them to do that, there is no incentive to finish, as I said. The Pachutet Nation, for example, kids that go to school there get on a bus, and they go for an hour and 45 minutes one way, and they get on the bus and it's an hour and 45 minutes the other way. So when we take a look at the possibility of nations collectively going to the government with our support for housing, for schools, for infrastructure, for that kind of stuff, those are where these conversations can be a bit more fulsome. But anyway, to loop back, education, no, we haven't as of yet done that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I don't think I have any other questions here, we're just receiving this for information today, so I do appreciate that. Definitely looking forward to seeing what comes back as the future goals of the organization and how it fits into that picture. Always difficult for us as a municipality of 96% tax base of residents. We get ancillary benefit from these development, but not so much direct. So it's been very impressive so far in terms of the number of partners that have been brought to the table. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
With that, we're going to move back on the agenda to item number three, which is the Community Climate Action Working Group. And again, no decisions here, but just making recommendations back to include some or all of the items listed here into the financial plan package. And I'm not sure who I should turn to, if I should go to Counselor Appleton or if I should go to staff. Nobody's turning on their microphone, so you know that. Ms. Rela?
Your worship, we would recommend, the discussion is led by Counselor Appleton, and staff is here to support if needed.
Okay, thank you. And there's essentially three asks of this. There's going to be five in the final report that come, there's three here, so maybe you can just give a quick overview of what they are. You've got a written report, I'd much appreciate it.
Thank you very much, your worship, and yeah, certainly I can elaborate on any questions that council may have. As is described in the memo, the Community Climate Action Work Group is concluding its work in developing five recommendations. As you noted, Mr. Mayor, there will be five recommendations in the final report out from the Climate Action Work Group. One of the focus areas that the working group adopted in their most recent conversation was directly in line with the ongoing budgeting process to essentially extract and focus on those recommendations which might have a 2020 or essentially a budget implication in the current budgeting process. So that's the purpose of bringing forward this information at this time, is so that recommendations that have an implication for the 2020 budget can be considered in the 2020 budget. As council is aware, the recommendations from the Climate Action Work Group are directly driven, the work of the Climate Action Work Group is directly driven by council's declaration of a climate emergency. The approach therefore is one of an emergency and one where, rather than defer funding allocations for projects that we feel can be impactful, they're being brought forward to this budget cycle so that they can be implemented essentially right of way. That's the purpose of having these here now. Just in brief, again, there are three recommendations. The first of which pertains to basically a feasibility study for the completion of an Oak Bay Active Transportation Network. This was developed in, well, not in conjunction with, but definitely through, you know, important information provided by the Director of Engineering Services and by the Engineering Department. As council's aware, there is already a budget line item for sustainable active transportation in the budget, so this recommendation does key in with that. The second recommendation, we heard very strongly from members of the working group and also from members of the public that attended the working group meetings, that there was a strong support for a community-based program to encourage action on an individual basis, on a block-by-block basis. So what is proposed here is the Cool Kit program from UBC. It's an example type of program. Council may be aware of similar programs that run in other jurisdictions. This is a program that was presented to the public back in December, and essentially provides a framework for citizens to take action. So it's a highly adaptable program. Essentially, this is providing some resources upfront to train community leaders and provide them with resources such that they can take action on their own. So this is very adaptable to the Oak Bay context, it's not a cookie cutter, it is adaptable to how the community sees it being used. And then the third recommendation pertains to two separate but interrelated grant programs. There was, again, very strong support from the working group and from members of the community for a small-scale, community-level grant program to help support the community-level actions that would be taken through the Neighborhood Engagement Program. And then secondly is a granting program that essentially takes advantage of existing CRD and other incentive programs and rebates that already exist. Other jurisdictions do provide top-up rebates and expansions to existing rebating programs for things like heating and electrical work, EV charging and things of that nature, as well as household upgrades. So this is intended to take advantage of existing granting programs and provide leverage through that. So staff have presented a number of, a couple of different options as far as how that would be resourced and how it would be funded. At this stage of the game, we're searching, well, essentially, we're looking for a recommendation to include these three recommendations and their funding implications into the 2020 budget cycle.
Just for clarification, can you highlight what is actually for consideration within 2020 and how those are funded? 2020 is, first one has no funding, second one has $66,000, and the third one has $15,000. Oh, sorry, $30,000. Is that correct?
That's correct, your worship. So there is no, in consultation with the Director of Engineering Services, and a fairly detailed discussion on what the needs would be in 2020 for the Active Transportation component. They've indicated that no new funding is needed in 2020 to work on this recommendation. The Cool Kit program, the Community Engagement Program, is broken up over three years, of which the first is 2020 at $66,000, and the two interrelated grant programs are $15,000 each for 2020 for a total of $30,000.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions of committee, Counselor Ne?
Through you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you very much to staff, to the communities, the advisory group, Counselor Appleton, for bringing these forward. Overall, I like where things are going a great deal. I'm especially pleased to see the Community Engagement Program. I do have some questions. I've read a little bit about this Cool Kit program, and I'm very supportive of the idea of building a resilient community network here, which I think is where this is going. But I would like to get more information. I'm just wondering if, I'd like to know more about how this has been used in other communities. I do hear there's inklings of other adjacent communities being interested, whether there's possibilities for partnership. But overall, I would like to have more information precisely about how this rolls out, what it looks like, what the possibilities are. I'm supportive, as I say generally, in principle about this kind of an initiative, but I would like to see more information about it. But I mean, I would, sort of, if the motion comes forward, I'd certainly support some kind of community engagement-type tool. I'm just saying I'd be interested.
Maybe you could just, Counselor Appleton, you might spend just one minute. I understand this is a, it is a platform, there's a website, and so maybe you could explain high level what that is and where the money actually goes to, because that's a substantial amount of money compared to all the other grants that we give out as a community.
Yes, thank you, worship. And understood and very much appreciate Counselor Ne's comments, is that it is sort of a large-scale project and it's difficult to distill down into, and certainly more information would be necessary. What I would describe it as is very much as a train-the-trainer type of program. So it's engaging staff and academics at the University of British Columbia faculty to sort of, to bring the tools to the community and train those community leaders who would be activating on a block-by-block basis. It's supported by a number of sort of individual survey and data gathering tools that help local activators and local residents catalog where their needs are. And so I would say that what is presented here is very much essentially a startup cost to develop a program which is distinctive to the Oak Bay context and supported by tools which are relevant to the Oak Bay context. One of the critical underlying features of the Cool Kit program is that it does have as one of its main functions, an urban forestry component. It does have a significant component of urban forestry. Mr. Hyde Lay in our Parks Department, I think, has had a fair number of discussions back and forth with the group at UBC because of the specific tools that pertain to that urban forestry component. So I would say that there is almost a subsection or a specific dedicated component of this which pertains to supporting and training and educating around specifically the urban forestry component in addition to other pieces. So I would almost call it a combination of an urban forestry program and a community engagement program.
I totally support this as an additional tool to support the tree bylaw that we've just implemented, so because we really do need community buy-in to ensure that bylaw is sort of fully supported. So I get that part. Again, I'm more curious about what other possibilities this engagement tool, does it just open it up to any kind of community neighborhood initiative around climate change? Is that how that works?
Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, worship. I think that it does, and I appreciate that question. I think that it very much does. I think that it aims to take advantage of the energy and the expertise and the interest of the community. For instance, in our particular context, I would see it very much incorporating an element of urban agriculture. Citizens who have come to speak to us at the Climate Action Work Group have demonstrated, and not just an interest in, but a specific technical capacity, and have already engaged community residents on the urban agriculture front. So I would see that as being one component that could be taken up by this project. I think that it provides a framework and the tools and the resourcing in order for the community to make it their own. So I think it harnesses the way I see Oak Bay volunteers and Oak Bay citizens really taking action on things that they are passionate about. I think that there's that energy in the community, there's a number of great ideas out there. I think this just provides the district-level support and the tools and the framework for them to take that action. So I would see the community taking it and running with it, with the energy that they already have.
Just one more question, Mr. Mayor. So what could we expect after spending this amount of money to see after three years in terms of uptake? And what has been demonstrated in other communities using this tool, Cool Kit?
I think that that's a good question. I think that that's a dialogue that we would have to have with the community. I think that in where it's been applied in other jurisdictions, it's been done on sort of a block-by-block basis, where they've actually taken, say in Vancouver, have taken, broken it down to say about 300, 300 and change individual city blocks, and have cataloged which of those blocks is now activated. So, and I apologize, I don't have the number from the Vancouver context off the top of my head, but I know that that's how they're tracking it. And I know that certainly they had greater than 30, 20 to 30 blocks out of that 300 that were participating within the first year, year and a half of having that on the side. And I apologize for not having that number freely accessible, but I would see it, it's very much designed as a block-by-block, neighbor-by-neighbor type of project, and so I would say that the metric would very much be described like that.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Appleton, and the working group and staff who put this together. I mean, I'm very supportive of the concepts behind all of this. I do have questions also about the Cool Kit program. I certainly recognize that it's meant to be an inspirational tool and a motivational tool to support grassroots climate initiatives, so that, I mean, that is a wonderful thing. But I too am wondering about kind of the end goal, what would be the repository of this? How would we, how do we see the information being used? And I can also see, depending on what is going on in neighborhoods, where there could be positive gains and perhaps negative gains. And so I'm just wondering how, if any thought has been given to building the program as it went along, because obviously it would be a multi-year, area-by-area or block-by-block initiative, and how would we build on that or hope to build on that?
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. I do appreciate Counselor Appleton trying to answer on behalf of the entire working group and lots of work being done, so it's not always an easy thing to distill on the fly, but thank you, Counselor Appleton.
Thank you, through you, and to Counselor Patterson. And that's absolutely a fair question. I would say that these types of programs, and to be blunt, there are a couple of different options for programs of this nature. They have similar implementation formats and similar outcomes to achieve this sort of neighbor-to-neighbor type of communication and lever the needs of the community. Because there are several different options of coming at this particular topic, I think that what's being presented here as a three-year could be viewed as a trial and essentially a little bit of a work in progress. I have communicated as chair to the Community Climate Action Work Group, and we've had discussions around the table, and I've tried to communicate also to members of the public that the recommendations arising from the Community Climate Action Work Group are not the be-all and end-all of the district's future work on this topic. It's the beginning of a discussion around how the district will implement sustainability initiatives and greenhouse gas reductions heading forward. So this presents itself as an easily implementable, ready, on-the-shelf program that can be essentially rolled out more or less immediately. I think that it behooves the district and the community to review the progress of that program and to say where, I think the comment is valid, where are the strengths of that program? Where are we potentially missing something that is distinctive to the Oak Bay context that we should really take up and we should prioritize in that regard? So I think that this three years would, as an initial recommendation coming out of the Climate Action Work Group, could be seen as a bit of a trial and information gathering in the community component.
Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and again, Counselor Appleton, thank you for that information. And just again, to follow up on this, if it is very much a conceptual train-the-trainer program, who determines who goes to get the initial training and then how it rolls out to the neighborhood?
Well, thank you for that. I would also, you know, I don't want to sort of exclusively talk about this. Ms. Jensen is here to, and has had discussions with Mr. Hyde Lay as well about how this could roll out. Some of that, some of those details have yet to be ironed. What I can say with a great deal of confidence is that there are individuals in this community that are looking forward to this happening. I know that there are individuals that are willing to, there are individuals that are willing to step forward and act as champions for the program, to talk about the local context, and that I think is important, because we have to be clearly recognize the fact that we do not, at this time, as a district, have the capacity to have a dedicated staff person to work on the sustainability portfolio. And so that's an operational reality. We do, however, have staff members that are very skilled and very knowledgeable about this content. So my personal belief is that this model of, you know, providing a little bit of support out to the community and then really bringing on that core of community champions really is the best implementation in short order. So I don't, Ms. Jensen, did you have anything to add to that? I'm sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just.
Ms. Jensen?
Thank you, through you, Chair. So really, the Cool Kit program is essentially based on two fundamental elements, and that is neighborhood engagement and climate action. So how do we, as a community perspective, take action on what's happening around us? So coming out of the School of Forestry at UBC, you're really, you know, some of the basic elements are based on your urban forest canopy, but it does lend itself to other actions as well. Counselor Appleton mentioned the urban agriculture, so that's another key element. But it's essentially meant to go out to the various neighborhoods in the community and workshop with them and train them as to how they can take action within their own neighborhoods to accomplish some of these things. So if you used an example like the urban forest cover, if a neighborhood chose to focus on something like that, the measurables in the long term are going to be, how many trees are we getting in the ground and what is that canopy looking like? Similarly, if we're looking at food security and urban agriculture, are we seeing anything happening in the boulevards? Are we seeing anything happening with additional food gardens showing up in the various neighborhoods? Are we seeing anything happening with additional food gardens showing up in the various neighborhoods? So there's, there's different avenues that it can take. A lot is going to hinge on the, the neighborhood residents within that, that area as to what they want to take action on, and then we can, we can measure from there. In terms of the overall program, we are definitely already building relationships into the community as to who wants to be involved in, in these training sessions and how they carry that into the community. We're also looking to the other municipalities to see if there's any way we can network with some of the other municipalities for, for sharing some of these costs. So what you see in front of you is, I'm going to call it the worst-case scenario for, if we're doing this on our own, those are the costs that we're going to be looking at. But we're hoping that we can reduce those in some way.
Counselor, again, Counselor Braithwaite, then Green?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Thank you. You've answered a couple of my questions, but I, I might just kind of push it a little bit and just ask, just for my clarification, because I, I do look at that number, and as the mayor had mentioned, it's quite a high number for 2020. So as far as initially, what, what would our staff requirement be? Because I know that our staff is telling us that they're at capacity for, for almost everything that happens within, within the community. So to add something else on to our staff at, at this time, I'm wondering if that capacity is there.
Ms. Verella?
Thank you, your worship. So I have spoken with the manager of Parks Services about this from a capacity perspective, because this is really about engaging the community and getting the teachers so that the, the group actually would come. My understanding, the group comes from the mainland, comes over, trains the trainers, and then you set them out into the community. So the amount of staff that, staff effort that would be required from the, the Parks Department, the manager actually thinks that's doable in this context, given that it's really about empowering the community members and getting them out, really undertaking the work.
Thank you, and if I could continue? That sounds great, and I think also looking to other municipalities to try and partner with them is, is also a good thing. My question would be, kind of along some of the lines that Counselor Ne was talking about, you know, to, to maybe take a step back and, and do a little bit more investigation as to the, the outcomes that this has produced within our area? Because I'm looking at the, the $66,000 in 2020, like is there, that's a quarter, almost a quarter of a percent of, on top of the already 8.05% increase that we're looking at on our budget, correct? It comes from reserves? Comes from reserves, that's a good thing. But, but could we not also then maybe look at having less amount in 2020 or postponing it to 2021 if we're looking at, you know, if, how it affects our budget? Just a question.
One of the, the, oh, sorry, your worship. One of the paths forward perhaps would be to have the manager of Parks attend the next special budget meeting to give a more robust report on this particular product. So while, while Chris isn't here tonight, I, I could potentially sign him up for the next meeting if that would be useful for, for council.
I, I, through you, Chair, I have, I have seen presentations on this. I, I think it looks really cool, but it would be interesting to have a little bit more information perhaps for, for myself. I'm not sure how everybody else who sits around the table feels about that.
Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Counselor Appleton, for all your hard work, to your committee and to staff, Ms. Jensen in particular, for all the support. And I see we have three community champions, at least three, sitting in the back of the room, so we will be relying on you a lot. And I guess my questions are following along the same vein as others have asked. And the larger questions for me for Oak Bay at this point, and, and I first of all support in principle all of the, all of the recommendations. I do have concerns about funding and the sustainability of funding, but I, it sounds as though that would be something we would work out at this table and in conjunction with our finance staff. But what is the role of the municipality overall in the longer term? And I think that's a question for us to at least think about. Do we want a standing environmental advisory body sponsored by the municipality to oversee initiatives like this? That's one question. What is the role of staff going forward? And I agree with Counselor Braithwaite that I'm very concerned about capacity and staff capacity, and that's why we, we would be looking to the community heavily to action some of these, these recommendations. But, but I think we have to ask ourselves, what will be the role of staff? What are the potential impacts on staff? Also, and that would include engineering and Parks, staff in both of those areas. And I, I'm very anxious to see us move forward on, on climate action, no question. And I agree that I think we need to train the community, educate the community, but I also feel like Counselor Braithwaite, I need more information too on some of these principles. I think I know what climate change is, but how does it actually affect me in my own community, in my own home? How does it affect my neighborhood? So those are all questions that are outstanding for me, and I'm sure that, I'm sure they will be discussed more frequently in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions on the, on the three things here. I, I think the act of transportation, making sure that's part of our funding structure is absolutely supportable. I think it's important for us to, to have a, a road path forward and appreciate the fact that, first of all, I express my appreciation to engineering for the fact that this is actually underway, and, and they're very aware of that, but just to have it in, in a priorities piece, I think is very important. The last piece on the grants, I struggle with a little bit in the sense that those are grants that are typically handled by other levels of government, and I, you know, it gets more and more confusing the more levels of government you end up going to on these things. So I, I always sort of struggle when you're trying to duplicate what's being done elsewhere and trying to make sure you're not over, over granting something and under granting something else based on other people's projects. So I actually don't particularly like direct granting on pieces, especially when our, it is, these are all even small dollars or big dollars for the municipality as opposed to the, their, the region, but that's just my take on it. And the climate, the Cool Kit, I really like the idea of, of getting the community, again, this is sort of what the task was to get out there. I am not at all understanding where the $116,000 is being spent. It's, it's a free toolkit, it's a, it's a bit of a train-the-trainer, and it's an expectation, I think, of the fact that there would be a, a group of individuals out there who are going to be holding educational sessions and things, and, and with the tool provided essentially for free, where, where is that cost coming from? And is that staff cost or is it something else? I also will be, struggle a bit with, if it's $116,000, I appreciate, we can use that from reserves, but is that, you know, is that money, is it half of that being used to actually provide trees or things of that nature more directly in terms of funding? Because $116,000 plants a lot of trees in our, in our urban forest effort. So those are things that I'm struggling with a little bit, but I think the climate, the, so maybe, if, I don't know if there's an answer to that, but where on earth is that money getting spent on? Where does it actually go?
Thank you, worship, and that, that, that's absolutely a fair question. I, I think that that very much, and I don't want to play past the buck or put staff on the spot about this one, but I know that that number comes from some more in-depth discussions that Mr. Hyde Lay has had with the Cool Kit group on what would necessarily be required. And I think Ms. Jensen was also involved in that as well. So in terms of the opportunity or the offer, potentially to have Mr. Hyde Lay present some more detail at an upcoming meeting, I think that that's where that, that, that could be forthcoming. So I, I know that he has had much more in-depth discussions about what the, what that content would look like and what the delivery model would look like. But I would also potentially ask Ms. Jensen if you had anything to add to that.
Ms. Jensen, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, through your chair. Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't, I did not bring the quote with me, but, you know, we're speaking very generally about train-the-trainer and, and, and being able to use this program to get more action within the community itself. But another significant part of this is that the, the, I'm going to call them the staff from UBC, along with some of their students, will actually come over to Oak Bay, and it's not just to do the training, but they will actually go out and do a bit of an analysis on our community as well. So what kinds of things could we be looking at to actually move forward on, on some of our climate initiatives? The, the breakdown is, is literally coming from that quote with, with UBC, so the 66,000 in the first year and so on, and that's really intended to reflect the amount of, of effort that happens in the first year. And then once you start getting into the second, third years, you start to see more of that action from the community itself.
All right, thank you. And maybe another question that could go back to the Community Action Working Group is this, is are there other ways of doing this in a sense that, front-end this from a community organization perspective, i.e. could a, the community association or some other, you know, community group take leadership on it, you know, do the fundraising and, and we provide essentially as a grant like we do for other projects kind of model as opposed to taking ownership of it with the staff requirement piece? Be another option of way of looking at, at funding some of that. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the, to the working group for excellent suggestions, and I'm definitely looking forward to, to, to more from this, from this group, assuming it continues. I'm, I'm rather intrigued with the, with the three items that were brought forward and, and intrigued, item number one has no apparent tax, no funding, because it's already essentially built into our, to our existing budget. That's, that, that's a very interesting suggestion as a way of underscoring and under, underlying another reason to move forward with, with that particular initiative. And the, the second item, I would be interested in a bit more of a breakdown as well in terms of the, the, the Cool Kit. Fascinating tool, I took a quick look at it. I like the idea of pushing a bit of responsibility down to our citizens, down to, to, to the block level, to the neighborhood level, and finding a way to make that happen. I, I'm intrigued at, at all the possible ways that we could do it. And hearing some of the conversations and some of the sort of ideas about how, like, what is our role? How is it that we can harness the obvious passion in, in the committee and in the, in the community? Reminds me of a passion that is kind of similar, the passion for helping in times of emergency. We've declared this an emergency, and we also have separately an Oak Bay Emergency Program, a program that just happens to have a train-the-trainer program, a type of setup, a program that happens to be fully reliant on volunteers, a program that, that, I'm not sure whether it, this, this, this type of emergency falls in the purview of that sort of a emergency. Certainly today, it most likely does not. But I do know, sort of glancing ahead at some of, some of what I read at UBCM and some of what I've, have a sense of what's coming down to us in the future with respect to SENDAI framework and Build Back Better and, and finding ways to mitigate upcoming risks. Effectively, this whole climate action is to mitigate an obvious risk that's coming at us. So maybe not today, but certainly soon, it might make sense to, to look at risk mitigation as, as a potential committee instead of something specifically just for climate, as a way of harnessing that passion and finding a way either through our volunteer organizations that, that we organize or, as the mayor was suggesting, maybe through the, the Community Association of Oak Bay or some other group, and find a way, sort of like what we've done with the refugees, another organization that could potentially handle that work, the, and some aspects of the liability. So I can definitely see what the committee is getting at, and I definitely would want to support that. The, the third item, I'm actually even more intrigued with it, to find a sort of a very targeted granting programs. I, I noticed it mentions as, at the end of the, the first one for BC Hydro, and that reminded me of the drawdown.org initiative, which ranked the top 100 climate reduction methodologies. It put bike infrastructure at 59 out of 100, but it put refrigeration management with respect to the disposal of freon, the appropriate insulation for, for buildings in, in warm climates to make sure that the air conditioning isn't wasted. Just finding ways that can actually deal with our, our use of energy in a good way, not just for cold climates, but also for the, for the, for the, for the hot times. And the, the mitigation for refrigeration management is 45 times greater on an apples-for-apples basis than, for example, bike infrastructure, which I find intriguing. So in terms of some of the, where those grants could be going, I'm already, I'm already imagining where, places where we could potentially fund that. Unfortunately, BC Hydro no longer has their fridge buyback program. There is no easy way of dealing with that freon at the time that we want to get rid of our appliances. And today, we effectively have to haul the thing off to landfill and pay for the freon to be recycled. And I worry about where that freon's going. So I'm, I'm intrigued with item number three being on, on, on this list as well. I can certainly support this going forward with, with more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. We'll go back to Counselor Ne.
Just one more comment in summary. I, you know, through you, Mayor, to Counselor Appleton, I, I really want to make sure that you're able to communicate to the working group that I think council has asked some fairly rigorous questions and, but quite justified, especially around the engagement one. But from my perspective, what I'm trying to communicate is, I, I would like to know more, that's one thing, but I really want it to be clear that as we move forward and address various policies in this community, as has been asked of us, we've declared the climate emergency, we've set up this group, and we're looking for other things to fall out of this, that it's very clear to me that we have to think of bottom-up and top-down. So if the community isn't activated, if they're not educated, if they're not able to be mobilized, then it doesn't matter what we do at this council table around legislating bylaws or whatever, it's not going to, it's going to be tough to enforce, to implement, and you're not going to have the buy-in, there'll be resistance. And, you know, today I was just walking halfway through the afternoon, it was a beautiful sunny day, as people know, and there was somebody, I'm back to leaf blowers, but there was somebody, a fellow leaf blowing, blowing the dust in front of the Hamilton. And there were about 20 people going back and forth on either side of the road, and an elderly woman was coming up the road, and all the dust, you could see it because of the sun, all the dust was up in the air, and she walked by and she put her sweater in front of her face to filter the dust on her, as she was breathing it in. And the young man with the leaf blower stopped the leaf blowing, and then he screamed at the woman and said, "That's so dramatic in front of all these people." And the point of that story is that, you know, as we make these transitions, they need to be just transitions. We need to be thinking of everybody, and the way to make that work really has to come from the community, that the community has to have these conversations and dialogue amongst themselves to find that place, to find the way they want this to work within their, their neighborhoods and, and the community as a whole. So I, I really want to say that this engaging our community around these just transitions is critical, and I, I think what I'm hearing at the council table, we just need some more information about how to move that forward.
So we also just need to give some direction by motion to, to what's going to be included in here, so we can get to that at some point. Do Counselor Green?
I just have a really quick comment in, in response to the engagement piece. This would make an ideal topic for, for a town hall meeting that, that, that we could facilitate as a municipality and bring all the interested parties together. And I know we have a very talented community. I know there were some wonderful members from the old environment, environment committee that was, was disbanded, I think it was 2015. So we have a lot of resources in the community, we just, I, I agree with Counselor Ne, we have to mobilize them, and one way of doing that is facilitating a gathering.
Okay. You can, Counselor Appleton, if you wish to make a motion, you're welcome to do so.
I, I would like to make the motion that it be, that the three recommendations presented here be incorporated into the 2020, 2022 strategic priorities and budget process.
Second?
Moved and seconded. At the end of the day, we're going to have to go through the budget line by line and, but I, I don't want to add things here if there isn't a general support for it. So we have all three things on here that would go in, it would give us, it would mean these dollar amounts would be added to the, to the financial plan for the next go-around. So we have a mover and seconder for all three to go in. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Braithwaite?
Yeah, I'm just, I, I thought, I thought we were going to try and get some more information before we would actually move ahead with this, because, and also, when I look at the, I, I look at your comments or listen to your comments that you said about the, the grant programs as well, and I wouldn't disagree with that. I mean, I would feel really comfortable putting the first one in, but holding back on the net, on the other two until perhaps we had a little bit more information unless, unless we feel that. unless we feel that if we do move ahead with all of these, then we have that opportunity to not actually move forward with it in the in the budget at that at a future date.
So I'm just gonna use my prerogative, which is to sever the three items, and we'll just deal with them individually as as motions, so we can talk to them individually. And so we have, the first one up would be the Engineering Services Department, develop a concept, establish funding requirements, et cetera, for active transportation. Is there any, so that motion, I'm just gonna sever that motion, so I'll treat it as live, move and seconded, and we'll treat that one first. Is there any discussion on that particular one? Counselor Green?
Just a general comment, following Counselor Braithwaite's comments, I would feel totally comfortable including all of them in strategic initiatives, but I do feel we need more information in terms of the budget piece. Would it be possible to to think of them as a strategic initiative and then on the budgeting, wait until we finish that process and work with financial staff? Just a question.
There's a note here that items one and three would require more staff input in terms of moving things forward. Item two, obviously, we need, we need some more information in terms of what that would actually contain. This is a budget meeting at this point, it's, this falls under our strategic plan in the broadest sense, but really, it's a question now of, are we gonna add or allocate funds in this budget for any of these three initiatives at this time? It can be done right up to the end of the financial planning process, but obviously, if we can make a decision now, that simplifies our process. As Mr. Payne so rightly pointed out, we'd like to do this as we go, not all at the very end, because that's gonna make for a very long night. So again, I've separated them, so the first one is the engineering piece. So that motion right now was to include that in the, I mean, it's not really a budgeting item, but it just puts it as a line item so that it's tracked over time. I'm not seeing any other discussion on that. All right, I'll call the question on that. Counselor Zelka?
That's regarding item number one, active transportation. I noticed our wonderful provincial, the province in are showing some interesting innovations in that they're they're defining more specifically the concept of active transportation in British Columbia and redefining it in many ways, expanding it to include e-bikes, to include electric vehicles, and and not just what has been traditionally thought of as bike lanes. And of course, the whole, the number of of methodologies for pedestrians and wheelchair and disability aspects. So as long as as our definition includes the wider definition and doesn't just mean bike lanes, I'm fully in support of this. Can I just ask the staff's understanding?
I'll turn to Mr. Haran in terms of, I'm not sure it's thoroughly defined at this point. Mr. Haran?
Thank you, Your Worship. Part of the recommendation that's on the table right now is for me as director to come back to the council and to the community with some concepts about what the strategic funding, so the the active transportation funding going forward, what it could actually deliver. So that amount that's in the financial plan, what are the things that could be done? And then to seek that direction from you about what to implement, so there's enough time to, so that we could have, we have some concept designs of some, for example, bike lanes that could be done, we have other things that could happen, and that would be in the mix of the discussion that this deliverable, this direction that you're giving tonight would provide. So in other words, provide some some mechanism for you as a council to give some direction to staff on these, on what to implement, what to design and what to implement.
I'm gonna go back to Ms. Counselor Appleton in a second, but just for clarification, because while this is listed as not, no funding, there's actually a line item in the budget currently under the financial plan for actual transportation, new to this budget. Mr. Haran?
Yes, Your Worship, that's correct. So the the idea is, in the financial plan, starting in 2021, there's capital funding available to implement projects, but there's no direction at this time. Should that be approved in the financial plan, then my next reaction would be to to start laying out what those capital projects might be, and then I have a responsibility to come back to the council to get some direction on on where to go with that funding. And then this Climate Action Working Group's recommendation is just echoing that responsibility to say that I have a responsibility to come back to you with with what the plan might look like for the next five years with those funding levels to deliver on active transportation aspirations.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, Your Worship, and just very quickly, in response to Counselor Zelka, I can say with with a great deal of confidence that the recommendation made by the working group intended to encompass all forms of active transportation. So with with the recognition that it, well, basically with the recognition that all all forms of transportation, all forms of active transportation that don't involve an internal combustion engine contribute to our meeting, decreasing our greenhouse gas footprint.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and just following to what Mr. Haran and based on your questions was was talking about, we did also add in the electric vehicle station options analysis to this budget. So there is a component already for electric vehicles that has been added to the budget separate from this.
Thank you. So the motion right now is, as it reads, any further discussion? Seeing any others in favor, opposed and opposed? And then item number two, which is the Neighborhood Engagement Program with the funding attached, I'll just consider that moved and seconded since I just separated the original motion, so it's live on the table. Yo, that's a good point, I probably will. Maybe I should do that now. Counselor Appleton was just reminding me that we usually would ask for community input, so we may as well do that now. If anybody wishes to come forward and address council on any of the items in this report, on the Community Action Working Group report, we would welcome you to come forward at this time, and you can speak to any of the issues. Yes, please come forward. And the process here is just state your name, municipality of residence, and on into the microphone, and just try and keep our comments reasonably short in the interest of time, but you're welcome to speak to us about anything on this item. Sure, just turn on the microphone first.
Do I have three minutes? Do I have more? Oh, my name is Gary McDougall, and I live on 961 Running Me Place. And I'm not mad at you guys for approving the house that is being built at the end of my street. I'm okay with that, that you voted in favor of that. I want to speak to the Cool Kit. Before I do, I want to first acknowledge that we are on First Nations territory, and I've been, I was at an indigenous conference at U Vic a couple of weeks ago, and something that really struck me was that, was that, yes, the indigenous people were separated from their land, they were they were separated from their family, their language was tried to be, it was it was stripped away. But before that, for 10,000 years, generation after generation, they lived here on this territory, they got their food from this territory, they got their clothing, and they lived, generation after generation. So the thing I love about climate change is that it can bring us together. Like, we might be, there might be people, there might be right wing people, there might be left wing, but together we can face this. The indigenous people inspire me. I learned with them for years, they, like I said, they lived with the land, they lived in a way that regenerated the land, it regenerated their food systems. So that's something that I discovered on my property, is I grow food in a way that that builds top soil, that that draws down carbon into the soil, it puts it back where it came from. And yeah, I don't use chemical fertilizers, I don't, it doesn't require fossil fuels. So I recognize that, like the indigenous people, we can have a positive effect on the environment. So I think listening to you guys was a little bit challenging for me, because because we are in a climate of urgency, I think we should be throwing everything in the kitchen sink at this problem. But I also recognize that there's not a whole lot of education, and there's not a whole lot of knowledge out there, but it's spreading, and it's spreading around the world. I think we have an incredible opportunity with the Cool Kit. And Andrew, I'm looking at you, and I think I want to say thank you for all the work you put into this. This is a tremendous amount of work, you and the advisory panel. I've been at some of your meetings, and you guys have put in a lot of time, so I want to thank you. And just recognize that there are so many benefits to the Cool Kit, like, we can immediately cool the climate by planting trees. We can encourage our neighbors to get rid of leaf blowers. I've given mine away, because of terror of us having discussions, I've given it away, because I can do without it. There's things like this that we can encourage our neighbors to do by getting together. And it, I think for it to be successful, it has to be more than just a piece of paper. It has to be neighbors getting together, it has to be discussions, it has to be encouraged. One of the things that I was a little bit challenged with your discussion is, you guys are elected officials, so I want to challenge you guys to do everything you can in this climate emergency. I know I'm doing everything I can for my children. I want us to think about why we're doing this. I make it a very big priority. I rely on you, because I know I can't do it alone. When I, when I was growing my food, I was inspired, I was building soil, I was creating healthy food, and and then I looked around me and I saw that not many neighbors were. So that inspired me to reach out to neighbors and say, hey, I'm gonna share this information with you. You know, we can grow food, we can lower fossil fuels, we can draw down carbon, our yards can be a part of the climate solution. And there's so many more things we can do. So I'm excited that the Cool Kit's on there, I hope you guys can support it. I don't know how much it's gonna cost or how much money you have to spend, but as a taxpayer, I support you in your decision. I hope it's a really good one. And I think that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDougall. Anyone else wish to come forward? Come on down.
Hi, I'm Andrea Careless, I live at 2439 Heron Street. And as I've said before, sorry to bore you, but I worked for the Ministry of Environment since 1992, and in climate change. And one of the things that, my background is reporting and communication. So we were involved in a lot of communication initiatives. Now, I know the province has a lot more money than we do, but I haven't seen a program like this before, Cool Kit, and we've done a lot. So to me, $66,000 in the first year is really not unreasonable at all. When you think you're bringing people over from UVC, they're probably going to be staying overnight, you're just, you're paying them like an hourly wage, they're they're putting a lot of initiative into the first year, and they're gonna train us, and really, all the volunteers you have, we are money, we're money in kind, right? Like, you're saving a ton of money that way. So and also because I've worked in communications, engagement is so important. And what I really like about this, in which the climate action you guys, the working group has picked up on, and you have too, is that regenerative agriculture and greening the land are really important. And in the past, in climate action plans, we haven't even thought of that. It's just been, I shouldn't say just, but it's reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which are also really important. But here's a chance to do something that is just coming along now, we're starting to be aware of this, thanks to Gary and other people. So Cool Kit gives us other aspect to to addressing climate change as well. I've read it, I've read it, I've read through it, and to me, it's a really, really effective way of engaging community people. You've got the volunteers, we know lots of people, so and on the Oak Bay Climate Forest, for example, there are 225 people, which is pretty good for a Facebook page. So I just think, you know, this is an emergency, we're talking about prosperity, what kind of a prosperity, what kind of prosperity are we talking about if we're not prepared to to throw a little bit of money in the first year at a kit that, I mean, I'm just one person, but I've worked in environment for a long time, in communications, and this is the best I've seen. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Careless. Is anyone else who wishes to come forward? Come on down.
Pam Woodland, Oak Bay, Newport Avenue. Thank you so much for all the work that's being done on this subject. I agree, it's an emergency, the bells are ringing, and I want to learn more. There, I live in a co-op, we have a vast green area in front of our place, kind of a complex situation. I think somebody who is really educated in knowing stuff about soil and positioning and all, you know, all of those kinds of factors could really help us turn our lawn into a meadow, or increase carbon sequestration through shrubs and this kind of thing. I would really appreciate having someone who is brought over from UVC, who's an expert in the subject, giddy up my understanding of what we could do to convert that particular area. I'd like to see them take a look at the green lawn in front of the municipal hall as well, and see how that can also be converted into something that is really useful with carbon sequestration and again, a meadow, let's bring back opportunities for insects and birds to have a bit of a life. We're not gonna have a life if they don't, right? So I had this little fantasy when people were talking about this stuff, like April 22nd, Earth Day. I'm just throwing it out, who knows, maybe it can grabs a hold of someone's initiative. I'd, like, there's the top down, there's the bottom up. One of the things that I was thinking, the municipal hall council could help to ring the bell on Earth Day about an initiative, launch the Cool Kit, because I'm inclined to think that it's probably fair cost. I mean, wages are incredibly high staying over here and all of the things that Andrea was suggesting, I can see they're not gonna try and rip us off. Launch the Cool Kit and find out how to turn the municipal hall lawn into a meadow, or a garden. What would be the considerations? We've got deer, you've got things to work around, and bring over those characters from UVC or whomever, and just initiate the idea and have it open to the public to come and take a look at an example that's being set from the top down. It would, I think it'd be a fantastic way to launch it, if not on Earth Day, you know, whenever it could be scheduled to to happen. Food security is a huge issue, so I think that really encouraging people to plant, you know, for food gardens and how to work around the problems of deer and things like this, we could learn so much from those people who come in, and this whole business of training the trainers is, I think, a brilliant one. Look at what's happened with Gary, with just the initiatives that he has proposed, that he has, that not proposed, that he's acted out. You go to one of his lawn conversion events, you've got 15 to 30 people showing up. This population is ripe. People want it. The more they know about it, the word is spreading, like, it's, it's very good news, you know, it's really, it's very neat stuff. Was there anything else? The working group is inspirational. I haven't yet convinced my friends that it's better than TV, but it is. I find that what council has established as far as a respectful environment, you know, good, smart people in dialogue with each other, having an exchange of opinions, et cetera, and and that is just modeled beautifully with the working group. It's, it's inspiring to me. Living in a co-op, there are governance issues that I have, you know, I'm on a steep learning curve to figure out how to be a good contributor to that. And I've learned a lot from council and the working group about how to do that kind of stuff. So I hope you pat yourselves on the back for being a terrific model for that kind of thing. And with the working group in particular, because this is a crisis, and this is a really, Oak Bay's not gonna save the world, but there are a lot of feelings in the air, there are a lot of people who are incredibly concerned. And when you have something like this being addressed, and you can be welcomed, excuse me, I do this all the time, it's guaranteed, you just don't know when, right? But it's, you can squirrel away in your own little dwelling and worry, like, what the heck is going on and what can I do? Or you can see that there is some way that you can do something to contribute to the solution, at least on a small lot by lot level. And this is no small thing, because it's the difference between all of us in our little spaces getting really squirrely about the news that is coming out on a daily basis, the storms that we have, the fear of the drought that may come down, the water that's not available, et cetera.
Ms. Will, I'm not gonna cut you off, but you're about six or seven minutes in now onto this thing, yes, so.
Oh, golly, and nobody's asleep. I get the message, you're not gonna cut me off, I'll cut myself off. Thank you for listening, you get my drift. I think the Cool Kit is worth the risk, considering what's involved, it's worth the risk, and I hope that it passes. And I think the other two suggestions are great.
I was so excited about, I am excited about the Cool Kit. And I was talking about the, the greening aspect of training people in Oak Bay, but also, my background actually is in reducing greenhouse gases. So the thing I like about the Cool Kit is, is it's really, you can, as Andrew, I think you mentioned, we can do whatever action we think is important. So we can focus on encouraging people to switch to home heating and help them find new information. We can teach them about HF, HCFCs. They're not free on Zennymore, by the way. But, which are in refrigerators and the importance of making sure that those are captured when they're taken to the landfill. There's so much we can do. So the Cool Kit gives us such a range. And, and as I said, volunteers are really cheap, so consider that when you're considering your budget, that we're free. And I charge a lot of money as a consultant, so. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So this is, item number two is, again, we're not making decisions tonight, but we have to decide whether or not we wanna add that level of funding into this year of, of the budget, is where we're at. Counselor, you wanted to add?
Thank you, through you, Chair. A couple of things. I haven't actually heard anybody sitting around this table say that they don't think the Cool Kit's a good idea. I think what we're seeing is that we would really just like some more information, because we have to ensure that we're being good stewards to the rest of the residents of Oak Bay. So I take that to heart when I look at spending amounts of money like this. So, so I will say that. I would love to be one of the trainers when it comes to this being implemented, so I will be definitely putting my name down for that. And Mr. McDougal, we were talking about you today in our Parks Reckon Culture meeting in regards to the training and the specialized, the people that we have in our community who give, who can give training to the rest of the community. And your garden, your gardening background came up, and we used you as an example of the great people that we have in our community, so. And I would like to say one thing about running mead. I think that the area of running mead that you're talking about is actually in Victoria, not in Oak Bay, correct? If it's the end of running mead in Fall Bay?
It doesn't.
I think it is. It doesn't matter. But anyhow, I think that's in, in, in Victoria.
I think he's, I think he's in actually Oak Bay portion. The, the other, I just, I'm gonna just remind everybody, those are all positive comments, but we try and make all the comments through the chair, so there's no sort of pointing and discussing directly at people. That's just, you did, you were very, you're saying nice things, so it's good, but we're trying to keep that all through here. Counselor, name.
I guess I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Mayor. So in anticipation of a motion coming forward for the second piece, I, I had, it wasn't clear to me that if we asked for more information about this initiative, that it would, it would cause that to be excluded from the budget. Is that, is that the case?
The motion here is just to include the $66,000, $35,000, and $15,000 in the budgets in the financial plan as, as part of it, right? So that would form, that would then be added to it. We could also ask for more information, and we could then take that information and consider that either before we add it to the financial plan, or we could consider it and then consider whether we wanna maintain it in the financial plan. We have both options.
So, yeah, the concern I hear from some of my council colleagues that they, they want more information. I would too, but I don't want it to be excluded from this year's budget, because I'd like to be given that opportunity to get the more information and then have the choice to have it put into the budget.
So that is totally doable. I think some clarity of what more information is, is appreciated, so that we have, again, being directed by this body to, for staff to go away or, or the working group to go away and do more work. If there's some clarity of what more information required is, we can, I will take this as motions to amend. We have a motion to include, and we can, if, if, we could make motions to amend for more information, or we can table this until we, this consideration, until we get that information.
I mean, perhaps that's, to me, that might be the way to go, is to table this? Because I would like to know what that, what that money is being used for. Like, I'd like to see a financial breakdown of what the money is being used for.
I'm just procedurally here, Ms. Hopkins, I'm gonna look to you. We're a committee of the whole, there's a motion right now I have on the table, separated, so we've got a live one for option two. I mean, I have emotions, I'm just gonna, what is our options here in terms of, we're just recommending to council to, to add things essentially, but it's, it would or would not be added to here if the, procedurally, if we wanna get information before being added, or we wanna just table, quote unquote, table this until we have that information? Is there a procedural piece that I should, I should manage? Because we're not gonna come back to committee of the whole for three, three weeks or so, so.
Through you, Chair. I think, well, you have a number of options. I mean, you could certainly, you can certainly choose to include it with a request for information and then make a further determination later. As you said, this is simply a recommendation to yourselves as council. We can arrange to have staff hopefully attend an earlier meeting than March 12th, which might also assist in your decision-making. But I would just mention that if you do decide to refer to another meeting, it's a refer, not a table.
Yeah, I was realizing that as I said it, but, you know, my, probably my preference for this would be to modify this motion to include it, but subject to, you know, consideration of further information, and to be clear about the information. That's probably my preference. Ms. Rela?
Just one point, Your Worship, that if council directs to include it right now, it would continue on the path of you seeing the whole picture, the financial plan. At any point moving forward, you can pull that or any other piece back out. It's just if you want to have this item included in the next draft.
Okay. And I'll, I can try and distill down what I've heard from, 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 from things people want information on, and that would be, where's, where's that $66,000, or like, what is sort of the breakdown of that, of that funding? And is there a mechanism within this to reorganize it in a way that might, you know, start with a community group and fund that group as opposed to funding it directly as a, as a body internally? I'm not sure if there's anything else. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question, if I may, to hopefully illustrate a point.
Sure. I'm gonna just add one more thing to the list to talk about, just so we have it on the table, and that is also the, I would also like clarification on the Climate Action Reserve Fund. My recollection of that fund, of the rules it was established, was that they could only be spent on, I believe it was, I thought it was capital projects that would not be funded if, otherwise. It was sort of around the same rules that the original carbon offset funding came from. And I just wanna make, I suppose the other clarification I'd like to get is just to make sure that, that actually qualifies under that fund, before we say an absolute yes out of that. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. In terms of one piece of information, where this money is coming from, I presume is coming from the Climate Action Reserve Fund, which is, appears to be growing at $35,000 per year, most likely related to the CAROP grant funding. And it's currently, as I already said, as of 2020, is expected to be at $242,000. So is all of this money that's being proposed here expected to come out of that fund?
Go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Your Worship. It hasn't been anticipated yet, because council hasn't put in the financial plan. However, answer plainly, we would definitely anticipate using the Climate Action Reserve. Confirming, of course, what the mayor has asked in terms of restrictions for that reserve.
Absolutely. And I appreciate the, that it's not approved, so it's just an assumption. However, I'm definitely in favor of this moving forward. Something is better than nothing, and the fact that we have reserve funds available for it. Other than a breakdown of the $66,000 in terms of where it's going, I would be fine to proceed and, and get that breakdown when we get to version five of our financial plan on March the 12th. Or, sorry, version four.
Any other discussion? So I have essentially moved on to the financial plans, but we'll get more information back on those, on those items. Is that, seeing nods around the table, is that clear to staff? Okay, thank you. I'll call the question on number two then. All those in favor? Opposed, then opposed? And item number three, this is annual funding program to provide grants, and it does have a note that staff input would be required to, in terms of the ramifications of that. So this is really a question of, do we wanna put that, again, into the financial plan? And if so, with what caveats? As there was original motion to move all three, this is now the live motion on the table, moved and seconded. I took all three. I called people for, for all three items, so. Is there any? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. I'll speak in favor of this. It's a bit aspirational, there's, there's no specific details, but with, with knowing that a report will be coming back from staff with details and that we are, be looking for partner, partner funding opportunities. I, I, I think we need to do something instead of nothing. Thank you.
And you have, Counselor Day?
Yeah, I am gonna speak in favor, or vote in favor of this one, mainly because it is a small amount of money. It's probably gonna take some time administering. It has yet to be formulated, but I'm very clear that small amounts of money can go a long way in incentivizing community behavior. So I, I'm supportive of this one.
Any other discussion? Seen none, so I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Opposed, then opposed? So that will make it onto the financial plan as well. That's it, I think, for item, for this item on the agenda. Counselor Appleton, did you wanna add anything?
Just that I, I very much appreciate the members of the public that came to speak to this point. I do very much appreciate the mayor and councils and, and also staff's indulgence to talk about this one in detail. The recommendations, like, I am bringing forward recommendations that I know were of significance to, to the working group. So I do very much appreciate everyone's time and efforts spent in, in discussing it in a fulsome manner, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. And yeah, these are the hard ones, where there's lots of really good, important work to be done and limited funds at the end of the day, so we always have to make these, these tough decisions. Item, now moving on to item number six, asset management in practice. Turning to Mr. Payne.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. We're gonna begin our, our capital budget discussions with a quick discussion on asset management, because as far as staff are concerned, asset management and capital spending are indistinguishable. We'll also talk a little bit about reserves and debt, since those are the primary funding sources of our capital plan. I'll attempt to be as brief as I can, unless I read a bit of interest from council. Please, by all means, interrupt me at, at any point.
And I appreciate that. It's, that first part of the meeting went a little longer than I was expecting it to, so we're now at creeping up on 8:30, so we'll, we'll move through these things in reasonably expedited form fashion and, and appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Absolutely. So in terms of the asset management perspective, we, staff wanted to take the time to demonstrate that really asset management is about delivering services, it's just about delivering services in the long term. So what we've done in the financial plan has demonstrated all the services that are being provided to the community by virtue of our, our asset classes. So the first slide shows four asset classes, road, land improvements, which is a fancy word for, for parks, sanitary sewer and, and drainage. And the services that are being provided, for instance, from road is your transportation, and how that's being managed is with, through a pavement management plan, for instance, 2013, we have a pavement management plan. We have one budgeted for $95,000, I believe, in 2020 contingent on, on grant funding as well. For park, for parks, the, the services that are provided to the community include recreation and, and health services, and there's a Parks Reckon Culture Master Plan proposed for 2021. Sanitary sewer, we all know what services there, and there's a sewer master plan proposed that spans 2020 and 2021. You'll find these in the special initiatives schedule that we discussed at the beginning of the budget deliberations. Similarly, for drainage, stormwater conveyance is a service, and there's a stormwater master plan proposed for 2022, for 2023. So you, you see how the, each asset class is managed in a comprehensive way. What the key here is, is to take all of these master plans and create one capital plan from it that, that is the best in totality. Other assets being managed by your staff are water conveyance, there's a water master plan that was just completed. Vehicles and equipment really support all the other capital services, though, so they don't necessarily provide a specific service, they support the other services. And we have detailed vehicle and equipment replacement plans. Our, our buildings, same sort of situation, they support all other services that are being provided. And we have a building asset management plan from 2016. And one thing that we would like to really expand into is, is natural assets. There are a number of natural assets that provide services for the community that without them, the city, or the district, pardon me, would have to invest in hard infrastructure to do just that. So Baucker Creek, for instance, provides drainage services, and by virtue of that creek being there, we don't have to put a big pipe in the ground. Same with your foreshore, provides recreational services to your community. So the focus on natural assets and the actual economic utility is an important thing for, for council to consider. One of the plans that addresses our natural assets is our urban forest management plan. So we talk about our reserve funding, our annual sustainable infrastructure replacement funding. This will be the third time that we've talked about it. The mayor challenged me today, and I shared the information with you, to actually go back to 2017 and calculate how much annual funding we were setting aside as a proportion of what the sustainable amount was. And that amount was approximately 40%. So that's not indicated here on the chart, but that's significant, because in 2020, if this financial plan is approved in its draft form, the, the annual infrastructure funding proportion is up to 82%. So the district will have doubled its sustainable infrastructure replacement funding in a very short period of time, which is remarkable. And if the remaining years of the financial plan are approved in their form and carried out in, in the draft version that we have here, we'll be very close to that, we expect. Obviously, subject to refining those numbers in, in greater detail as we go along. I've refined this chart just to demonstrate by asset class how close we are to sustainable infrastructure funding levels. And really, the difference here is I've now included the anticipation of investment returns. You will recall in version two of the financial plan, we increased reserve investment returns to the $200,000, $375,000 annually. So that is sustainable funding that we should consider, and that's, that's one advantage to, to really incorporating investment forecasts in our sustainable stream. So that brings our percentage of target up to 82% by 2020, and I believe it was closer to 78% in previous versions, so significant. So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about debt. The district itself actually carries very little debt, but it is a means of funding capital investment. It's just funding it after you've spent the funds, as opposed to funding it before you spent the funds. There are some statutory limits on debt. We can exceed what's called the debt servicing limit. I'll talk about that in a second. You must have the approval of the lectures for long-term debt, which basically means you need to, you need to have, carry out a, you know what I'm talking about here, that you have to carry out a, thank you, a referendum. I knew someone would shout it out if I stumbled long enough. Thank you. Or through the alternative approval process. There is an exception for approval of the lectures, and if that's your debt servicing is less than 5% of your debt servicing limit, you can have, you can carry debt without approval of the lectures, and we currently are below that threshold.
Can I just ask a quick question? So is it the total, total debt is less than 5% or any one debt request is less than 5%?
So it's, it's debt servicing, so it's the total cost of your interest and principal as a proportion of sustainable revenues.
Perfect, thank you.
So we'll talk about that one second, yeah. And there's a maximum 30-year amortization on any of your debts, so you can't carry debt for longer than 30 on one asset. So the debt servicing limit, as I mentioned, is the addition of your principal and interest payments on all the debt that you have outstanding, that you have to pay annually. It cannot exceed 25% of your sustainable revenues. Sustainable just being, you know, taxes, user fees that you see on, on an annual basis. So that's actually quite significant, that the, the province has delegated the authority to the municipality to take 25% of its revenues and pay down debt. That would be quite significant. We're not close to that level, but you have that authority. Borrowing is generally through the MFA, and in almost all cases, it goes through the municipal finance authority and must receive support at your regional district, and that's because the regional district takes on joint and several liability for that debt. Means they're on the hook if, if, if I perform poorly, we go bankrupt. The regional district is, is on the hook for that. that level, but you have that authority. Borrowing is generally through the MFA in almost all cases. It goes through the municipal finance authority and must receive support at your regional district. And that's because the regional district takes on joint and several liability for that debt. It means they're on the hook. If 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 I perform poorly, we go bankrupt. The regional district is on the hook for that. And that leads to exceptionally low borrowing costs because the MFA will issue bonds and the bondholders see it as very low risk of default. So our principal payments through the MFA, they do not reduce the interest costs throughout the amortization of it. I'm going to demonstrate this on the next slide. It's it's if you think of a conventional loan like a mortgage, as you pay down that mortgage, more of your payment, every single payment gets applied to principal. It reduces your principal. And so the interest component reduces. That's not the case with with MFA. And the reason for that is the MFA will take what debt you need. They'll go and issue a bond and that in the open market. And essentially, we need to pay that bond back in the ten years that it's issued for. So during the term of that bond, you're not paying down a loan. They just expect the entire principal when you go and pay that down. And what the what the MFA does is they they create these things called actuarial adjustments. So we will pay principal every year. They'll take that principal. They'll invest it for us and they'll they'll skim off off the principal. So if they earn for us three hundred thousand dollars in investment returns from our principal, they'll take that off of what we owe on that debt. So that's why the MFA is really working for for us and where our borrowing costs are exceptionally low. So here's just a quick example. Again, I don't want to bore bore everyone with this. A conventional mortgage mortgages on you on your left, you will notice that as you are paying your payments annually through two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty three, your principal, the portion of your payments, your principal is rising and your interest is is reducing. But that's not the case with MFA. Your principal and interest stays exactly the same. But because you are you are providing more principal payments to be invested, your actuarial adjustment rises and that reduces your principal. So that's that's a that's a bit complex. And I imagine you don't care too much. The main message from here is that the actuarial adjustments really do reduce our borrowing costs significantly. And because the interest and principal is static, it's very predictable in our budget. We can predict what our debt servicing costs are going to be to the penny for the next, you know, for the term of of the of the debt. So I just wanted to demonstrate how close we are to our our debt limit. So right now we're at two point six percent. Our debt servicing costs are only two point six percent. So we could borrow significantly more if we needed to. Not suggesting that that's necessarily what we do, but there's no concerns in terms of our debt limit. I'll go over briefly our reserves. Our reserves tend to be a point of confusion with with a lot of folks, even even my colleagues. Reserves, broadly speaking, can be established many ways. And that's probably what where a lot of the confusion comes. You can establish a reserve by bylaw. And council will recall that we had a reserve bylaw recently adopted, which outlined a number of reserves. That's one way. You can establish a reserve by resolution and just say, staff, go set aside this money. You don't need a bylaw. That's a reserve. And we have to abide by council resolution. You can establish a reserve through the financial plan by law. So your infrastructure renewal reserve, for instance, was established by financial plan. You never really told us through resolution. You never told us through bylaw, but you did say through the by virtue of the financial plan that we're setting aside this money. You can establish a reserve by administrative judgment. So you'll see in the next next pages, over twelve million dollars in general reserves and surplus. And a lot of that is the CFO saying, well, we're going to need this money. So I'm just I'm putting it here. Council has ultimate authority over that money and and can ignore administrative judgment or 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 re-prioritize administrative judgment. But that's where a lot of our reserves have come come about. And then there's your accumulated surplus, which just happens naturally if you return budget surpluses over the year. That's just something that grows. There are some reserves that are required by by legislation. Quite often, you'll you'll note that our bylaws bridge legislation. They the village parking reserve, for instance, was one that had to be created when we were in receipt of those funds. And then you could have reserves that are created with external limitations. So if the provincial government gives you a grant that says it is only for this use, gas tax used to be a little bit more limited. There used to be a lot more limitations around gas tax. That's a reserve. We don't control the external limitations to that, but it's money set aside for a specific purpose. So there you go. So all of all of that really accumulates into what you see in the financial plan and and the year-end financial statements, but they're they're going to differ. I think really what matters to council and what matters to the the public is how much money do I have set aside to do what? Right? So that's what we what we attempt to answer in the in the financial plan document. We've taken them from all the sources and we've listed them. And you'll and you'll see the reserves listed in totality in the financial plan by law. So here here's the one. You'll notice the first line is general reserves and surplus. So that includes your accumulated surplus plus all of the administrative judgment reserves that we set aside. So we've set aside money for potential litigation. We set aside money for other things. Climate action and major crimes are administrative judgment reserves that have been separated for the benefit of council decision making. So I'm using my my judgment to distinguish some reserves so that that you're aware of it and it supports decision making. And there's a number of other reserves there and the sources. So if you need to know what what our reserves are, where they come from, we've got that information available for anyone.
Mr. Payne, can you just clarify the mechanisms used to move money between reserves? Once money goes into a reserve, what is the tool used to change where that money is?
Thank you, your worship. And that's a good question. So if you have a reserve that is established by bylaw, then you must enact a you must enact an amending bylaw to move the funds or to use those funds for a different purpose. If you have established a reserve by resolution, then you must have a resolution that redacts that resolution. If there is a reserve that is external that is due that is there from an external restriction, you don't really have the authority to to move that around. And then the administrative ones, you can just tell us at any time to move to move those rounds.
Thank you.
Good question. So in previous presentations, we demonstrated the impact of the capital budget on overall reserves. I just wanted to highlight for council and the public the main reserves that are seeing activity over the next five years if the financial plan is approved in its current form. Right? So here you have at the very top, your capital works reserve, which is a major source for a lot of our capital works. And that's dropping from fifteen point six million to thirteen point one million. The reserve below that is your general surplus and reserves, and that is fairly flat. That is mostly used for your special projects, your one-time projects. So you notice it's dropped by, you know, just over a million dollars, which happens to match what your special initiatives budget was. The one below that is six point one million dollars is actually your Upland Sewer Separation Reserve. So that's an anticipation of the sewer sewer separation proceeding. And then below that is your infrastructure renewal reserve, which grows from four point one million dollars to fourteen point five million dollars. So that one, that reserve is the the main recipient of council direction when it comes to infrastructure renewal funding. And then below that, you have your your machinery and equipment reserve. That's to fund public works equipment. And the last one on the list is a fire equipment reserve. You'll notice the fire equipment reserve is projected to go negative over the next couple of years, but it will rebound rebound according to our projections since we have funded the contribution to that, what we consider as sustainable levels in this financial plan. Okay. Any questions about that? Or shall I?
Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm I know that while our reserves have not been excessive, there are many municipalities that set minimum and maximum levels to reserve funds so that they are demonstrating fair fair taxation over time to to residents. What would be the plans going forward of establishing or how are we establishing minimums in each of the reserve categories? I know we're nowhere near the maximums, but how are we establishing the minimums?
Through your worship, I my recommendation to council, at least at this stage, would be that we don't establish either percentage or dollar minimums or maximums, simply because the reserves are there to buffer against volatility in the tax increase. So they are expected to go up and down and up and down as our capital expenditures concentrate and don't concentrate. So we are in a year and frankly, our some of our assets are century centuries old. So we're in a concentrated period of replacing that. So you would expect, had we built up reserves to do that, for our reserves to decline significantly. So to answer your questions about minimums or maximums, I actually I actually recommend a policy target of just just the amount for sustainable infrastructure replacement. Now, that's subject to great judgment. That's subject to to judgment. What I think our our reserves should be maintained at to ensure that we can replace our assets at without taking on debt might differ between me and the next CFO. But that that's the policy target that I would recommend council adopt in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, your worship. And so I'll conclude the reserve presentation just again with the same chart from the previous two budget deliberations that shows them our movement in totality of our reserves from fourteen point six million in two thousand nineteen to forty three point five million in two thousand twenty four for a net decrease of four point two million dollars. The interesting bit about this, I actually brought out today. If you exclude the Upland Sewer Separation Project from this, our total reserve spend over the next over the next five years is projected to be forty one million dollars and five million dollars for would be debt. We would actually end up in a net positive reserve increase of two million bucks. So absent of the the Upland Sewer Separation Project, that's evidence of the the increased funding levels that have been put into reserve contributions. So that that concludes the the overview. And now, unless there's questions, we will proceed into the specific capital budgets.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the excellent presentation and nice to get another view purview of the of the reserve funds. Did I hear you correctly that the debt is expected to increase a little bit, probably from two point six to to a slightly larger number? And if that is the case, is it because of the restrictions on the use
Through your worship, our debt servicing limit is expected to decline. And that's primarily because our sustainable sustainable revenues are expected to incline. Mind you, our our debt, our the totality of our debt should be paid off by two thousand twenty three. You'll see in two thousand twenty two, we only have four hundred thousand dollars that would be outstanding. And then if we choose to build Carnarvon Park Building and take on debt to pay for that, that's when it would go back up to five million in two thousand twenty three.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow up to the to the reserves. If you if you look at what was in the official community plan, that was based on two thousand and nine tangible capital asset analysis. And if you look at the OPUS engineering report and the Moore Wilson WSP reports for buildings and and the infrastructure, certainly, the OPUS report talks about the the backlog, the that that gap in in infrastructure funding that you happened to mention in the Mr. Payne mentioned in the last meeting. So if you look at those reports and you look at the their comments about the backlog that we have in 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 making up for the years where we we did not put away with the reserves or or put the appropriate sustainable funding in how on an if we're if we're doing sustainable funding on a on a what is the hundred year plan of the the one year of that hundred year capital plan to do the funding, how do we how do we clear the backlog to a more acceptable level? Is that is that clear?
Mr. Payne?
Thank you, through your worship, and an excellent question, a difficult one to answer specifically at this point, because we've really, the district has really tackled the first step of asset management, which is assigning some money. The second step is developing the master plans that really show what our short term priorities and capital investment should be. So actually spending the money, paving the roads, replacing the replacing the mains. And we don't have that data. We don't have that information. And we especially, even if we did have that that information, we need to put together for a holistic picture. As the mayor alluded to, I think, at the last at the last meeting, we don't want to repave a road where we're just going to be digging up and replacing the drainage underneath that road in the next next two years. So I'm just, I'm not really able to answer. How are we going to deal with the backlog? I'll leave it at that. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody from the audience wish to speak to this? These are sort of if you're on the agenda, really, number six through nine, I guess we should have went through them all in terms of the the pieces. Is anybody from the audience wish to take them forward? Okay, thank you. There's really nothing for us to do here. Is any other questions? I'll take them. If not, we'll move on. Nope. Okay. Moving on then on the agenda, item number ten, corporate administration capital plan. This is, I think this is one that does require some descriptions. Appreciate the information that's in the package. Mr. Payne, or are you the person? Okay. You've got multiple laptops going here. This is looking very impressive.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just be two minutes to set up the financial plan document so folks can carry along in the page number. Okay, yes, thank you, your worship. What I what I how I plan to proceed, if it pleases the chair, is I'll display the entire department capital budget on the screen. I'll go through the capital projects one by one, provide a brief description. Some of the capital projects warrant a bit more discussion. We'll pause and and do that. But I'll look to the chair as I move through as whether or not I need to pause through some of those capital projects.
Can I just ask for the what page number you're on right now?
Yes, thank you. That's page seventy two.
Thank you. I was on it and then I scrolled and then I was lost it. So it seems easier to ask. And for people at home, it helps as well. Page seventy two. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. We will begin with the corporate administration capital plan. And the first capital project listed in that plan is the website upgrade. This is a project that's been on the on the books for a little bit a little while. Staff recommendation that the website is in need of a bit of a refresh, improve look and feel, navigation, search features, and possibly provide for content management. Although the the website provides for good information, connects us with our citizens, what we find is that expectations from the from the community changes after a number of years. And typically, you see a refresh of a website for about every five years. So we've proposed that for two thousand twenty for thirty thousand dollars. In two thousand twenty one, we've also put in a component for thirty thousand dollars for an intranet. So that would be internally facing for staff, possibly for for council, for for collating information and accessing information. And again, plainly speaking, twenty the two thousand twenty one figure hasn't been fully scoped out. So we're not completely sure what would result from that and what how much the components would cost. But it's something that that we think would be worthwhile So unless there's questions on that, your worship, I'm going to continue down the list. And the next capital project on the item is the council chambers audio equipment upgrade. And this is really a replacement of existing of existing infrastructure. And there's a bit of risk right now that if that infrastructure doesn't work, we won't be able to deliver council meetings in the same, at least in the same format. The the council chambers audio equipment would include wireless station for delegates. It would include microphone replacement and a couple of other components that are slipping in my mind here. And the central processing unit is really the main is one of the main products there as well.
Counselor Green?
It's for you to, Mr. Payne. Thank you. Would they include these kinds of microphones or would we have a change in the equipment? Would they include these kinds of microphones or would we have a change in the equipment?
Through the chair. So they, there'll be a mix of, of microphones. They'll be similar to that but different. They won't be quite as, they'll be more modern. It's, it's hard for me to describe them without showing you a picture of them. But they will certainly be, provide much better sound quality than the current equipment does and will also be really helpful for the people tuning in at home to also be delivered better sound over the webcast.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. So we won't have the, the rock star headsets or anything. Thank you.
So thank you. An image of my son's gaming headphones somehow, all sitting around. Go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. So the next capital project listed in the corporate administration capital plan is the municipal hall refurbish. And there's two components there, but we consider it one project. So that's the, the refurbishment of the building as well as the furniture that would be procured and, and for, for our staff. So the municipal hall refurbished project would include installation of, of new doors, flooring, painting, redesigning construction of some work offices for more efficient use, some redesigning and construction downstairs, creation of new meeting rooms for staff use, as well as some electrical upgrades. There's also, as you see there, a hundred sixty five thousand dollars. That includes contingency for furniture, for replacement of all furniture in municipal hall. But it would produce a net increase of four new workstations on the top floor. So part of this project, which should be flagged, for lack of better terms, to, to councils that staff have been diligently looking for opportunities to temporarily move municipal hall operations because there, there is a hazardous abatement part of, of the construction. And it'd be very difficult to, to organize all of the, all of the trades while municipal hall operations were being, were, were undergone. So, so that's a, that's a service interruption and it's certainly something that's been, been looked at right now. For this project, the director of engineering prepared a staff report for, for the discussion. And Mr. Cockle has, has joined us as well, if there's detailed questions about that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson, then Counselor, Counselor Braithwaite I had first actually, then Counselor Patterson.
Just through you, Chair, just because some people might look at that line item and go, wow, they're spending, you know, over a million dollars on municipal hall. But I think that it needs to be made clear that the last time money was spent on municipal hall was before I was born, probably. So I would, I mean, like nineteen sixteen eight, no, just kidding. Some, but something like that. I think that honestly, I mean, really, that it hasn't been, there's no, been no money spent on municipal hall in at least thirty five years, I would say. Is that correct?
Until the most recent upgrades that you will see in these chambers and in the foyer.
Counselor Patterson? And then Counselor Green?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do appreciate that the municipal hall has not had any investment in it for a long period of time. And the Moore Wilson consulting report did certainly highlight a lot of the deficiencies in it. So, but when I was looking over the more detailed analysis of it, what I, what I didn't find was the, in the Moore Wilson report, there were items that were identified for a number of our buildings, but certainly for municipal hall that were critical items. And so I just want to know how we are tracking and, and making the decisions about critical items identified in the report and the timing of those, those items. Second part to that is some of the work that has been done just recently and, and, and long past due and much required, I know that. But the, the, the cost of carrying out those projects was significantly higher than in the report. So, so there's one, one aspect, are we doing the critical items? And the second, the budget expectations as compared to those consulting reports and what we should expect perhaps.
I'm not sure who I should direct this to, if that's to Mr. Haran, Mr. Payne?
Through the chair, that's a good questions and I haven't, I don't recall the specifics of the Moore and the, the Moore Wilson details about the, the critical items off the top of my head and have to go back and look. But one thing, just as a general comment that we've observed in other places where we've done detailed analysis is the, the broad numbers are, in terms of options analysis, really work well from the Moore Wilson reporting. But then when we get into the details of the specific scope of what actually has to be done, sometimes what was anticipated is not required to be done. And then there's, of course, there's other things that were not anticipated that do make it into the scope. And we've seen that in some of our studies about the marina, for example, you know, some of the rec centers, some, basically all of our buildings, that same kind of thing happens. So we will definitely go back and look to see if there's, to make sure that we've incorporated the, the full scope. But I'm anticipating based on the group, unless there's, unless Mr. Cockle has something to add up top of his head. But I don't believe, I think, I think we're, we're pretty confident with the scope that's required, but we'll double check to make sure.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Green, then Nathan Appleton.
Thank you. I really don't have a question, it's, it's more about a comment. It follows on, on Counselor Braithwaite's comments. And that is that this, this building is, I think, it's, it's health and safety. I, I think those are big issues for this building. I know that in the summer, many of our staff boil and in the winter they freeze. And I, I just think for a municipality of this size and nature that, that we need to be sure that we're housing people in appropriate quarters. So I, I totally support this, this budget item.
All right. We don't have character development in a, in a line item, so it's good to, building doesn't do that. The Counselor Nathan, Counselor Appleton?
So I, I totally understand the, the need for these refurbishments for, for health and safety issues. They, they make full sense. I guess my question here through you, Mayor, is, you know, we're, we're close to looking at our village plan. And I, I'm just wondering how premature this may be in, in light of the fact that we're going to look at what that plan might be and what this building might look like, were that planned to be rolled out? So, you know, in my head, I'm thinking, you know, the way, for example, Langford's got it. They've done a partnership with some developers and they've got residential living on top. So I, I'm just, when we're spending over another million, almost a million and a half dollars to, to do these refurbishings and I'm, I'm just wondering if we could hear from staff about whether this is premature and whether there's any value in installing a bit or whether we could and consider what this might look like in the context of the village plan that's coming up in the next year.
Mr. Haran?
Through, through the chair, the, when we look at the top six or the highest priority municipal facilities and then all the facilities as a whole, the facilities master plan is meant to, to develop how much service life is available in those facilities and when they need to be replaced and, and the rough costs of what it would be to replace them based on the general concept. So the Moore and Wilson architects' reports from twenty sixteen had those, some of those all up costs for refurbishing or, or replacing the assets as they are. And I've kind of summarized that in the chart in the report there. So if municipal was to be replaced, for example, it would be, you know, in twenty sixteen dollars, roughly five million dollars. And, and there's, the reports talk about all the different ways that you could make improvements in terms of what could be involved with the municipal hall. But what we're preventing, providing in this report and what our recommendation is and it, and it reflects what was in the original twenty sixteen reports is this building to continue to be used for its current purpose going forward for the next twenty years requires annual operations and maintenance funding. And in the first five years, the estimate was one point eight million of renovations, refurbishment, just to keep the current level of service going. So this report reflects not long term replacement of the building. It reflects just maintaining the current level of service sustainably for the next twenty years. So an initial investment, which is reflected in this report, and then over the next fifteen years or more, additional renovations, but a much lower cost and scope as we, as we go forward.
Counselor Nate?
Well, I guess, I, I'm understanding what you're saying. I, I guess what I'm still wondering is what if we just started from scratch again? Like, what if the plan was to do a P three and find a way to create a municipal hall but also some residential development, like a three story unit or something that would actually pay for, you know, a, a business plan that would allow the, the municipality to have a, a place to do business that would be paid by the revenue of the increased density of the property?
Mr. Haran?
Through the chair, those are definitely considerations to, to be factored in when the community, when the council and the community makes decisions about facilities in general. The challenge there is, is there's a prioritization function of, of, these are expensive. The facilities replacement are, they, they need to be saved for, planned for. And then deciding as a community what goes first. So is this, if, if municipal hall is a certain expense, is that the priority that needs to be done? Or is an emergency services building need to be done or a combination of those in some way? So there needs to be staff work done with the community and with the council to lay out what those might look like and what the timelines need to be and what the costs need to be. And those are complicated decisions that take time and take public engagement. And the challenge we've had as a staff to provide that function and the decision making capability for you as a council in the community is that this function of, of providing these decisions for you or, or information is done off the side of our desks. We don't have that staff capability to, to provide this in a timely way. So we, we provide this as the bare minimum way to sustain this facility going forward and then, and then aim to provide further information for the bigger picture plans about broader facilities questions.
So just one more question, if you, if I may, through you, Mayor. So am I understanding you to say that this proposal has come forward because any other kind of proposal isn't possible? Because you're just trying to do what you're able to do on the side of your desk as it is. But it would take more monies to be able to think of another project plan for the future of this facility that's not available to you right now?
Through the chair, from a staff perspective, as we analyze the potential top priority buildings, facilities that would, that we would present as the ones that would need to be refurbished or replaced first, we recognize that some time needs to pass before, that these are not decisions and changes that would happen within a one, two, three years. It might be longer. And so to sustain this building even for five, six, seven more years, it, it's not our recommendation from a risk management perspective and from a service level sustainability perspective to maintain status quo for the building. Considering the building's function is the, the vast majority of the, of the operations, planning, execution of projects happens from this facility, including these kinds of meetings. The, the recommendation is to make this investment to sustain this building at least for ten more years while there, and to create time and capacity to make the bigger facilities management questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. It might just be worthwhile to just highlight the scope of that capital project, what's included in that. Just for those at home looking at that large number, what actual work is going to be happening? I know a large part of it is rejigging around workstations and trying to make it a more functional space, but there's also a lot of other pieces in there. Mr.?
I can, yeah, absolutely, your worship. You mean, you mean the details of what's in that?
Just at a high level.
There's upgrading the doors for security and access purposes, rearranging the, in terms of making better use of the space in the main administrative area to, to facilitate, to better enable us to do customer service in that, in that environment. There's the, the furniture and desk space organization to, to better support staffing needs going forward, electrical upgrades and, and other kind of interior construction requirements to, to better enable flow of people and, and the customer service requirements. And I don't know if I've missed something there in my ramble.
Ms. Verella?
No, your worship. I, I think that was a good recapture. I think, I think something that we'd really like the public to be aware and, and Counselor Braithwaite talked about it, when, when was this building last invested in? When I arrived here, the lights in the building were being turned off by the actual breaker. The carpets can no longer be cleaned because they're being held together in numerous places by duct tape. So just to get a sort of sense of where the building is at, I think is an important piece of the public discussion.
Thank you. We're Counselor Appleton next.
Thank you, your worship. And I have a point which at, at first glance seems like a detail, but to, I, I feel is not actually a detail. And, and I'm seeking direction from staff because I would want to see how such a thing would be funded. What I see presented here essentially is, you know, a large scale functional upgrade, tumminess of a hall, a refresh of the hall. I understand, not, not just from the perspective of usability and comfort for staff, which is critically important, but also to properly reflect the professionalism of staff externally. It, 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 this, this is key to demonstrating the professionalism of staff as the environment that they're, that they're provided to work in and, and what you see when you enter the hall. So this, I think, is, is part of, is essentially an intangible from what's being presented here. I have a specific component that I would like to see included. And I don't know whether it's something that would be included in capital funding or even whether it could be driven through capital. And as part of that refresh, I would like to see us include a specific and significant acknowledgement of indigenous communities in this, in, in the hall. And whether that takes the form of extending an offer to our local First Nations to provide a piece of artwork or something of that nature that could be included into the hall as part of that refresh. I would like to see that happen and I would like to see us budget for that. I don't know whether including a certain amount for an artwork or something of that nature would be appropriate for a capital investment or for being drawn from a, from, from reserve budget. So that's, that's my question to staff. How would a resolution for the inclusion of a line item for that type of inclusion, how would that be done?
Interesting question. And then usually in these protocols, we would probably first best to reach out to the, to our member, our partner First Nations and just ask them what they would see as appropriate and, and appreciated. And then we can maybe bring that back because that would drive a lot of the estimated, if, if any estimated cost attached to that. And maybe that's, that's a worthwhile thing for us to do, just to, to start there and then come back here to this table.
Thank you, worship. I, I'm, I'm just curious as to if, and, and absolutely, this would have to be done obviously in full consultation with local First Nations. I'm just curious about the best mechanism to then bring that forward for funding. Because I know that we as a group have, have sort of undertaken to ensure that funding decisions are made as part of the budgeting process and that things that happen outside of that should really wait for the next budgeting process, unless it's something that has an extreme exigency to it. I, I get that part. Is, is there a way to work within the current budgeting process to place hold or something? Or is it just better to just park it and bring it back, I guess?
Mr. Payne? So I don't want to get too bogged down on this one item, but if something we can deal with here now, we can.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and a good question. I'm going to offer a bit of advice, which I think can probably simplify it, which you probably won't hear me say too often. But it would be possible for such a resolution to be, to be proposed and if adopted by the committee, for staff to go and research options and abilities to, to include that in the scope of the project. But what I would recommend, and this is what might surprise you, is that we don't include some, some place marker, a budget for it. In reality, what will happen this year is if council approves this budget, it's something to tune to twelve million dollars in capital projects, we won't spend twelve million dollars. So we can bring that back to council at some point and say, we're still within our bylaw authority. Are you okay with the proposed budget? And, and we will fund it from, from reserves. So we have built in flexibility, given the reality that we given the reality that we probably won't deliver on every dollar in the capital budget. That's what I would propose.
That sounds fantastic to me. I just need to know how to phrase the resolution in that regard.
I can give some direction here, but a resolution to direct probably mayor and staff to go and reach out to community First Nations to come back with options for including recognition as part of the renovations?
So I would make the motion that council request the mayor and relevant staff to reach out to our local First Nations governments to gauge their interest and develop options for including a visible acknowledgement of those Indigenous nations as part of the municipal hall refresh.
Is that workable from a staff perspective? Moving second. Any other discussion on that item? Councillor Green?
It might be also wise to consult our Arts and Culture Committee that has quite a broad range of experience on that committee, and they have solicited other pieces in the past that have First Nations significance. So I think it would be, I would like to see it in consultation with them also. Thank you.
Councillor Braithwaite?
Yeah, and I would think that we could look at the Public Art Fund as well to help pay for something like this if we were to go ahead with it. I mean, that's what that is there for, is to purchase public art. This is a public place, so perhaps we could use money from that fund towards something like this as well.
Just in the interest of time and simplicity, I think we'll go and just find out what, from protocol perspective, what's possible, and then we can bring that back. And maybe art might be something else. So with that motion on the table, is there any further discussion? All who are in favor, opposed, non-opposed? Thank you. I have Braithwaite then Patterson.
Thank you. And through you, Chair. I noticed that in the list on page three of your report, you do talk about electrical upgrade, and you do talk about the council dais. And I'm hoping that those two will merge, and we will be able to have electricity perhaps coming through the council dais in some way, shape, or form, if that's built in there somewhere. Just a request.
Certainly that could be looked at without any problem, but it is something that we've looked at through the rest of the building as well, and what's under the floors, once we open the floors up, because that's part of what the renovation would include, is to upgrade that piece.
Thank you, Mr. Cockle. Yes, I actually have a speaking order here, so I can get back to you. So I have Patterson, then Zelka, then Green.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm just coming back to what Councillor Nay put forward. And I know that certainly this is a significant investment, considering that no investment has been made for many years. But, you know, and it would be nice to look at the broader picture. But, you know, I'm looking at the Moore Wilson report, and the recommendations that were put forward, some of them were for critical items for municipal hall. And the bulk of the work that was recommended to be done for municipal hall was for years zero through five, and that was in 2016. So, to me, you know, while you don't like to perhaps put a sizable amount out in consideration that perhaps you should be looking at a variety of options, those variety of options could, based on another group that I'm working with, with the CRD, considering a new building perhaps, that would be five or six years out at the best perspective, I think. And so that would put us way beyond, and I just, you know, I think that would be clearly not taking into consideration the safety and the working environment for the district staff. So while I appreciate certainly the reminder that there's other considerations that we may want to look at along the way, I certainly understand the need to do this, because that report, as I said, was in 2016, and this work was supposed to be done in the first five years. So we're almost past that.
Thank you, Councillor Patterson. Councillor Zelka, then Green?
Thank you so much, Chair. I have, I very much appreciate the report coming forward. I do see sort of similarities between what's already in the financial plan and the report that was put forward. And I understand the desire to refresh this place that hasn't had attention. I want to commend staff for the incredible amount of work that's already done in the last year, with the lighting, with the, with what little you had, you achieved so much already to make the place already look brighter. In fact, some are even saying, well, why do you have to spend any more? Because it already looks amazing. And now, we know that wonderful cosmetic work was done to make it look fantastic, but under the covers, the electrical is still bad. I imagine there's still asbestos under there in the tile. Like any old Oak Bay house, this municipal hall is going to encounter the same asbestos issues with respect to trying to remove any tiling, and then suddenly, where do you dispose it? Well, you have to take it up to Heartland, and you have to get a double bag it, and you have to do all these other crazy things that every Oak Bay resident has to do. But knowing that all those things are in place, I can see that some money's been put forward to, I presume, relocate all of Oak Bay staff from this facility to another. I just wanted to touch upon that for a moment, before I have one or two other questions. Are there any other facilities that you've actually considered, and have you considered how long it might be that we would be elsewhere while this would be proceeding?
Mr. Payne, Mr. Cockle, I'm not sure who wants to answer that question?
Yes, through your worship. The expected duration is two months at best. So, a long duration, and the timeframe for that, we're aiming for the summer to avoid as much disruption as possible. And we have looked at a number of different options with respect to relocation, none of which have been successful so far. We considered Windsor, we considered Oak Bay Lodge, some other creative ideas, which I won't necessarily need to say right now.
So I've heard you say about two months, and obviously details to follow once we do some approvals. I wanted to make a reference back to the same report mentioned by Councillor Patterson. The Moore Wilson report from 2016, the asset options, and the sections that are quite well described for the municipal hall. I was quite excited, and unfortunately, maybe like others, expectations got raised in terms of all the options that we could proceed with with respect to this building. And when I heard the earlier presentation from the library board, how they're looking at Oak Bay at potentially expanding, replacing, building a new library, I noticed that option 4C in the Options Analysis Report from that 2016 report, also talks about a new municipal hall on the same location here with a library towards the rear, and potentially some residences above, I could imagine that potentially could be added. So I got quite excited when I read that, knowing that we do need a new library at the same time. So the question through you, possibly to our library rep, or possibly to staff, has there been any discussions yet as to what may or may not be happening with our library board in the short to medium term, with our library building, excuse me?
I can direct that. I can just answer. The reality is that municipality builds the libraries, so the library board would make a request for specifications, and the municipality actually completely is responsible for the build, maintenance of that building. So that would be up to us.
Well, I'm just curious, and that could help drive maybe some of the decisions on delay or to move forward. Now that a squirmalt building has been put in place, excuse me, a squirmalt. Was it squirmalt? Was it a new one? That was just put in? Now that that's in place, I have a feeling that Oak Bay is floating pretty close to the top. Does anyone know whether we're at the top yet?
Councillor Appleton, go ahead.
Through the Chair. I guess I would, as Library Board trustee, as was mentioned during the Library Board's presentation, we're going to be receiving the Facilities Assessment Report. We haven't received it yet. It'll be received by the board next month. It's eagerly anticipated. And the consultant that's working on it is the same consultant that did the analysis of options for the main branch. And the material that they produced was extremely useful and very detailed. So if we can expect, and I do expect, the same amount of detail and the same amount of information coming out of that report, I think council will have a lot of, and staff will have a lot of good information to inform future decisions coming out of that.
If I may just finish up my comments. So I definitely see what's being asked for here, and I understand. We're not ready. I wish 10 years ago, or even in 2016, when this report came forward, that some movement started at that time for us to look at one or more building replacements. However, if we didn't do that, and it does take a couple of years to get those sort of things in place. The Moore Wilson Architects Report, about 10 years out on criticals, starts talking about replacing roof membranes, and I would not want to see us do that on this building. So I would hope that we would, if we are going to do this work, that we'd look at maybe a 10-year timeline. And then maybe then possibly either a new municipal hall, either in the same location or at a different location, depending on what the village plan could potentially look like at that time. So I'd be fine to support this. But I do want to ask the mayor, with respect to your grandfather, where did this municipal hall used to be before it was here?
Across the street.
Thank you very much.
All right. I just, I have a, I'm generally in agreement that it's hard to spend a lot of money on a building that we may be looking at replacing in the not-too-distant future. I have one question that I think, just because Executive Director's here, I will ask. There's in here monies put in place for moving Oak Bay Volunteer Services, which is the first time I saw that as part of a piece. Now, that's on us to help with that. The cost of putting that over there, is that something that's, where is that at in the planning process? Is that essentially, this space over there that will work for the Oak Bay Volunteer Services? This is all? Mr. Cockle?
Yeah, so when we first started looking at this building envelope, one of the pieces that we saw that fit really well, and in conversation with Oak Bay Volunteer Services, was to, A, get some more office space here that we could use for usable space for staff as we expand and so on and so forth, and actually use more space for people who are crammed up within the building. We approached Oak Bay Volunteer Services, and in that process and talking, we recognized that they're more akin to working around the Monterey Centre. And so there's a computer room over there that is no longer being used as a computer room and being viable. And so we've looked at, and part of this plan identifies moving Oak Bay Volunteer Services over there, putting up temporary wall spaces and building some temporary office spaces within that unit, also putting a washroom and stuff into that area. But putting that group together with Monterey seniors and the Monterey Senior Centre so that they work together as a good unit. And Renee's here to speak to it if you'd like. But that is one of the pieces that we've been looking at.
And just fill us in, they're a pretty integral part of our volunteer and community building. So just want to make sure we understand the impact of this, and timing. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, so when we were approached with this move, it was good timing because as Executive Director, it was obvious to me that for us, the space is not serving us as well as it could be as well. So there was some consideration on my part to see if we could even adjust the space. And it was essentially the same time that the municipality had approached us to say, you know, would you like to consider a new space at Monterey? So my presence here is to say that we are absolutely in support of this, on behalf of myself as Executive Director and the Board of Directors. We see so much potential in this space. We've spent some time over with Mr. Cockle, as well as CAO Varela, to look at the space. It really will really check some boxes for me that we, at this point, are struggling with in our current space. Our staff is growing. I'm already looking at changing the organization chart once again. We are looking to be able to deliver more programs. We know that we are, you know, a tenant and guest in this space, and we know that the meeting space is very limited for you all, and even in our own little space downstairs, I've tried to come up with ideas of using our closet to have meetings in. My staff, at this point, we decided that wasn't going to work really well for us. So in the end, when we do need to have just quick meetings or something private, maybe we've had a volunteer come in to talk about one of our clients, and we need some discretion, I will step out of my office to give my Outreach and Services Coordinator some space to do that time. Or even our volunteers will come in, and they'll need some private time with our volunteer coordinator to talk about something. So for us, we really welcome this change. My time developing a relationship with Leslie Cobus at Monterey has been really fruitful. We have a great working relationship. There's so much synergy for us. The other big piece for me, being downstairs, is the accessibility for us when it comes to people with mobility aids. I've had some people trying to come downstairs with walkers. And even our own volunteers, there's some that are, you know, in wheelchairs that can't necessarily come downstairs unless we really work to make sure they can come in that locked-side entrance, and it's a little bit of coordination on our part.
Fantastic.
So from our perspective, we really welcome this and appreciate that we're being considered for this move. With the understanding too, is that we would like something also, you know, in the form of a memorandum of understanding, just so for future, we really understand our relationship. Because I know for me, as Executive Director, that's been in question sometimes, as to who's responsible for the space to do what. And I think we can really pound that out really well with this move going forward.
Remarkable how many agreements we have that are verbally agreements made 40 years ago between people who weren't alive anymore. So yes, fair enough. That's fair enough. Although I like the idea of meetings in closets. That tends to make for quick meetings. Thank you very much. It's good to hear that, that that's working for you. So, okay, great. Thank you. I have Councillor Green next, and last on this meeting list.
You'll be really happy. My other question was already addressed, but I just wanted to add to those comments. It makes complete sense to move that group closer to Monterey, or within Monterey Centre. I mean, it's obvious to me. It's also obvious that we have been in a state of decline and neglect in terms of these buildings around us. So I'm really excited by the momentum that is building for change.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson?
Just one thing I would like to add, Mayor. You know, I look in the budget, and of course, quite a bit of money has been spent recently on painting. I understand the need for that because painting wasn't done for so many years. But I'm just wondering, is painting not something that should go in an operations budget? And we should, once we get it up to par, maybe budget annually for some painting to be done, just in the operations budget and not co-capital?
Mr. Payne?
Through your worship, yes, I would agree.
Okay, we have agreement. So right now, as it stands, this ask, as it's laid out here, is included in the budget? So unless there's any motion to change that, we're going to move on to the next item. Councillor Green? Oh, sorry. There is a recommendation here. They recommend that that be included. Yes. No, the recommendation here is that we actually make a motion to recommend to council to include it in the financial plan?
I will make a recommendation to council that we include this in the financial plan.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Councillor Zelka?
A question through you to our CFO, with respect to page 72, the Corporate Administrative Capital Plan. The numbers appear to be there. Am I missing this? On the municipal hall refurbage, for 1.157,900,000. 1.15 million.
Through your worship, yes, they are already built in. It does make the resolution somewhat redundant.
So then, if I may, is it already included in the 8.05% for this year tax increase that's being proposed?
Through your worship, yeah. These are reserve-funded, so they don't directly impact taxation levels, but they are absolutely included in that big picture.
Thank you.
All right. Fair enough. The motion is a little bit redundant, which is why I went first to just moving on. But it doesn't hurt. I think that's... But it doesn't hurt. I think I sounded like this to make a visible piece of it. And Counselor Zelka?
If I may, then one more question. This number appears to be about 200,000 more than the number in the budget. Is it assumed to be the same or is there, or is it just the contingency that's different? I wasn't sure.
Mr. Payne?
Through your worship, in the financial plan, you'll see it split into two line items. Below you have the furniture separated.
Thank you. I don't see any further discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Very good. I will just make a comment. I don't think it's necessary for the, for the conversation, but I, I do appreciate the willingness of council to make this investment in here. I think there is a, it is past the point of ridiculousness in many parts of the building and I think it's, for all kinds of reasons, not least of which, just reorganizing it in a way that is more welcoming, clear for people coming into the building, having meeting rooms that people can meet in outside of the one out here. All those things, just from a functional work environment, I think is really, really positive. So just appreciate all the work going into the staff on this. Counselor Zelka, we're over the agenda item, but if you want to add something else, you're welcome to.
It would be a question, it may be to you, it may be through you to staff with respect to moving forward with some of the ideas that were raised here on asset replacement, new buildings. Would we be generally waiting for our excellent staff to come forward with suggestions at appropriate times? Or maybe at next year's planning would be the time to raise that? I just wanted to know, in terms of setting the expectation, how much lead time do they need?
Because this is part of a larger planning process, so where is that in your timelines in terms of the building assessments, building replacement and that process?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. The financial plan is holistic, meaning there's a bunch of different moving parts that are all connected to facilities and the recommendations that staff have provided, many of those we've discussed already. One of them being Facilities Management/Infrastructure Asset Management position in the Engineering Services Department with responsibilities to deliver a facilities master plan. So that's one of the proposals. If that is approved as part of this year's financial plan, then the idea would be to staff that position and then get moving on that, on that deliverable because that deliverable is meant to answer many of the questions that were brought up tonight about timing, about priorities, about public engagement, about how to do the long-term asset replacement for those facilities if the council, so that's the, I think that's the short answer to that question.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. Moving on to item number two, all right, number 11, Financial Information Technology Capital Plan. Just looking at the time, we have, thank you, Mr. Cockle, we have three items just to get through it before the 10 o'clock and it does have to be unanimous vote to go past 10 and I'm not going to support it. I just want to move us to the point where we, we get to that. So, Mr. Payne, was it 10:30? Oh, so let's shoot for 10, shall we? We started early.
In your worship, there was three capital projects not discussed in the Corporate Administration Budget. Happy to move through them and go to the finance and IT or continue?
We can do those other items, just if.
I think I can, I think I can be brief, your worship. The next capital project on the Corporate Administration Capital Plan is the Todd House Improvements. Council will recall that the district commissioned Engagement Consultant in 2019 to identify practical and cost-effective solutions for the conservation of Todd House to a heritage standard. That final report has not been delivered to staff, so we don't know what the financial impacts of that are. We deliberately budgeted $342,000 because that is the size of the reserve that exists for it. So it gives us maximum flexibility, but we do not expect the cost to be that amount. We also don't want to provide hints of what the cost might be until that report is available publicly for everyone. So this project will not proceed until council has, sees that report. Okay? The next project there, Foreshore Protection, this is a carryover item that's been in the budget for a number of years and hasn't been spent, I believe it was anticipation of some riprap. But again, staff, staff recognize that there hasn't been a good, robust plan put together for the expenditure of this item. So we're going to recommend that it actually gets removed in version four. We're going to proceed with that simply because we don't have the details to support this budget request at this time anyways. The next item there is the Marina Structural Repairs and in 2019, the District Commissioned Facilities Condition Assessment as part of the Marina Lease Negotiation Project. And a preliminary report has been shared with staff and that's how we were able to populate the figures there. But council will be in receipt of this specific budget request in concert with a number of other reports related to the lease and they really need to be considered altogether. So again, we've populated the report based on that assessment, but council will have an opportunity to review this budget in more detail at that time.
Is it fair to say that there's a possibility some of those costs would be borne by, through the RFP process, that for the building replacements as part of that RFP process or building upgrades? Mr. Payne?
If I understand the question correctly, your worship, some of the costs would be borne through whatever agreement results from the negotiation?
Right, yes.
It's a possibility.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, your worship. Now we will move on to the Finance and IT Capital Budget and that is on page 75 of the financial plan. I will ask the gentleman from Sea to Sky to come and sit next to me for some of the, some of this. I'll begin, I will begin by discussing the request for funding for payroll software and I'll just provide a bit of background to why that request in there. So the district currently outsources the physical paying of our, of our five payroll groups to an outside provider. So we provide them with the data, they fill your bank accounts. And like as mentioned, there's five payroll groups, QP, IFFA, the police, council and the exempt group. In 2019, our payroll provider eliminated its Canadian cloud services. So if we were to use their service, our data would go through a US cloud service, which is not legal. So at that time, we transitioned to a service, a sister service that they have that really does not meet the needs of the district. And in fact, if we continue with the use of this product, it will result in us incurring over $100,000 in operating costs annually to have them do that. And we believe we have the capacity and capability to provide all those payroll services in-house, but what we need is the software. We actually are in receipt of software, which is connected to our ERP accounting system, but what the work hasn't been done is for me and my staff to analyze and engage the rest of the district to determine if that software is right for us. So this $100,000, it is quite frankly, a guess. It could be spent on implementing the software with what we already have, so paying staff to integrate and transition the data or actually purchasing new software. Okay?
Are there any questions? Go ahead. Counselor Zelka?
So you haven't purchased the software, but you wanted to do the analysis of a couple of different software potential solutions that could satisfy Oak Bay's needs?
Through your worship, I don't want to set unrealistic expectations, but my hope is that the software that we currently have will meet the needs of the district and I have used that software at other municipalities. So I have a reasonable confidence level there, but what I need to do is engage other departments such as Parks, Rec and Culture is such a big component, make sure it works for them. If that works out, then it's really about paying knowledgeable folks to transition all our data and set up the systems in there.
Brief follow-up, as long as none of the software is referred to as Phoenix, I'll be very happy. Thank you.
Your worship, the next capital project on the list is a network and other IT hardware. We've consolidated all of our network IT into one budget there, but it is detailed, is provided in more detail in the financial plan here. And you'll see in year one of that plan, staff are recommending that $136,000 get spent. $60,000 of that would be on a network switch replacement. $60,000 of that would be on the wireless access points for recreation center, which was a request from last year. Now I believe that request was deferred pending an IT master plan and staff went away to determine whether or not those wireless access points could be provided for free from an internet service provider. And I believe that Sea to Sky has determined that that's not the case. They don't do it anymore because it's not a moneymaker for them. Really what the offer to us was for Shaw to, or another ISP to put one of their towers on our property and we would still have to pay a total of $1,500 a month for them to host the wireless access point services, which is $18,000 a year. So if we look at the cost of this, we expect our wireless access points to last five years. It's $12,500 a year. So we think this is still the most cost-effective way and we can also manage our own infrastructure. In terms of the network swish, switch, we're just at risk of a failure if the switch goes down. There's lost productivity. There's other work that staff can do, but there's certainly an interruption in service and lost productivity. So this project would not only replace our existing switch, but it would actually create redundancy by purchasing another switch so that if it were to go down, we can swap it in, repair the switch and continue operations. The other items in that plan are essentially replacement of existing infrastructure, your servers, your backups, your battery backups, as we see, as we expect that they'll go out of service in that time.
Thank you. Is there any option within the wireless infrastructure option of including essentially like a fee for service? I was thinking, you know, in terms of revenue sources, we rent rooms at Windsor Pavilion and other places quite often. Often they want wireless service for their gathering. If you just have a standard $5 rental session or something like that thing to just help, is there any mechanism for that where we give them a password or there's some mechanism to, I guess monetize that service to the people who are using it?
So your worship, to address that one, technically, yes, we certainly could implement that with the proposed solution that's in the plan. It would give us the ability to have different methods for different use cases, basically, so the public could have access to wireless that wasn't charged and we could, we could have wireless available in certain meeting spaces, for example, with a paid service plan attached to that.
In your worship, I am in the process of working with Parks, Rec and Culture to develop the fees and charges bylaw based on last budget deliberations discussion about revenues. So that's something I will bring up with Parks, Rec and Culture as well.
Thank you. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship. And just following up on something that Mr. Payne had said, so through you to staff. Have I got it right? I do remember the discussion around options for wireless provision in the, in Parks facilities. And I do recall it being a bit of a sticking point because the cost was pretty high and it seemed that there should be some other options in that regard. And I don't mean to put staff on the spot here, but I seem to remember that there was potentially direction to bring back those, those options in a report to council or do I get that, do I get that wrong?
Mr. Payne?
Through your worship, I'm afraid I can't recall. Perhaps it was contingent on an IT master plan being brought forward?
Ms. Is that, Ms. Varela, did you have a?
Just that staff will confirm what that recommendation was. I can't pull it up off the top of my head. So we'll actually confirm and bring you back the correct answer.
Thank you. My recollection of it was, I think Counselor Zelka raised at this point that there was possibility of partnership and some other pieces that came out of that. So I'm heartened to hear that, because conversations have happened with service providers to see if those are possible to reduce those costs. Counselor Green, you wanted to add something?
I did. And with all due respect, I would oppose charging a fee for internet services in our public buildings and I'll tell you why. In the context of a fairly large tax increase, I think it might be adding insult to injury at this point. What I think we should do first of all is find out what other municipalities do in this regard before we, you know, make any decisions. I just, I don't know, it's just kind of, it doesn't sit that well with me and I could be wrong.
I'm just asking the question, so.
No, I know.
No decisions here tonight on that, on that side. Okay, Counselor Appleton?
In the same way, thank you, your worship, in the same way that we approved earlier certain components of the plan to go forward, but then OSCO requesting some information about that, would it be possible in this case to also request of staff to provide some information about analysis of other options with regard to the provision of this service? I have it included, but just get that clarification from staff or the follow-up from that IT master plan discussion?
So what would you like to, what would you like to have back from staff?
I guess I would like to see whether or not there are other options for this particular budget line item. And granted, I totally recognize that staff has had these discussions potentially with this one service provider. My recollection of the discussion, the last time we talked about this was that there would potentially be an options workup or potentially something presented to council that presented a number of different options. So I don't know whether that's feasible at this stage, but that's, that's what I would like to see to back up what I see as a fairly substantive number.
I would, I'll, I'll go to. We have some conversations happening over there.
Could I, could I invite Sea to Sky to comment?
You may. Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I forget your name.
Jason Bristow.
Thank you, welcome.
So we did engage different service providers. We reached out to both TELUS and Shaw. We use them both right now to provide our internet service in the buildings and we currently have Shaw deployed offering a public wifi offering throughout the recreation buildings. That system is very limited and doesn't allow patrons to connect for a very long time and it doesn't allow them to do much in terms of bandwidth. And when we've been touring buildings, we hear the same thing over and over again. The wireless is an issue. Patrons are coming in and asking to connect to the wireless and they're constantly getting dropped off. And I, I picture it as it's, it's just an offering that you have to have these days because people are, people are looking for it and if it's available, they're going to stay in the buildings for longer. Monterey, I mean, it must take them hours a day to troubleshoot internet issues on iPads with, with seniors coming to the building and trying to connect. The staff have gone above and beyond to try and jerry-rig the system together. We really need a managed wireless solution in these buildings. And when we engaged TELUS and Shaw, they both said, we're not interested. We're reevaluating our public offering and if we want to go into that space. And TELUS came back and said, we're, we're not going to do it. We'll put one access point in somewhere in a closet and it's not going to serve the whole building. So, and if we wanted more, we'd have to pay for them. Shaw came back. I personally went through each building with them. They did an assessment of how many devices we need to cover the space and they were only interested in putting the devices in if they could charge for it. And to offset that, they were going to put cell towers in each of our buildings. But they didn't want to put cell towers on all of the buildings. They only wanted three of the buildings. So that left us with paying the remainder of the, of the fees, which is $1,500 a month. So yes, we can provide, we can provide more insight into exactly what was proposed by Shaw. Happy to do that. But there is, there aren't more than two options. The other thing is that this isn't just about the public having access to wifi, it's also about the staff. Right now, there, there isn't staff wifi in any of the facilities except for this one and you guys right now are connected to it. So if you were to go to Windsor or the Rec Center, you can't take a staff laptop and actually use wifi. It's just not possible. So this would solve two different, two different scenarios and it would also, it could possibly allow us to do things like analytics, track how many people are using each of the facilities as well. That's something we haven't discussed, but it's built into the system. So, yep.
Okay, I'm just, if we want more information, what the clarification of that is in terms of?
I appreciate that very much. That's, that's completely satisfactory. I can see by, or I hear from your response that there's been a significant amount of due diligence and done in exploring options with the, with the potential providers and you're also indicating clearly that it's either these two options or, and that's it. So there's really no other options to explore as far as. So there there's really no other options to explore is from was what I'm understanding. So I'm I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Uh thank you very much, Chair. Um I I used to, this used to be my business, but that was a couple of years ago. And things have obviously changed since I've I've changed careers. Um uh the concept of a cell tower, I understand these days is something that's about this size on something that's fairly uh innocuous. Unlike the old cell towers that were monstrous things that airplanes sometimes flew into. So um uh I I I would be, the only thing I would be interested in knowing is on what sort of um uh quote cell a tower. Uh or or cellular uh service that the um the service providers might be willing to to help us in terms of offsetting the cost to the public. But I do understand the the need for a a better managed wireless solution that would satisfy both staff and the public's needs.
Okay, Council Green?
I I just have one quick question through you. Um are are these small cell uh units now, cell tower units? Where we have a lot of children going into these these facilities. Are there are there health hazards known to to any of them? I it's just a question. Thank you.
Honestly, I don't think that's something that that we can comment on. Um. I don't know, um frankly. I would just have to go based on what um the providers are telling us or what the manufacturers are telling us.
The only reason I raise it uh is that when um I sat on council in North Sanage, they wanted to install. A company wanted to install a cell tower near the school, excuse me, near the school. And and there was a public outcry, so we we denied their um request. So that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
I think the recommendation here is not good on that path anyway, so it's kind of a somewhat of a moot point at this point. Um so we have that portion of it. I I will say, I appreciate the efforts going through. I I am curious that that estimated number. Uh I have not been in this that done anything to do with wireless installations for a number of years. But um the location, uh the design of that network obviously matters quite a lot. Uh and it doesn't take very much to have a fairly large variation in terms of the numbers of APs. So I I is that, is there been a reasonable reasonable confidence in the in that number in terms of having sufficiency of coverage? Uh to address the broader uh service provision and the different environments, specifically things like the rec center. Where there's often a high um uh high humidity, which has placed havoc with with wifi. And often demands quite a bit more coverage uh units.
Uh so yes, your worship to address that. Um so we did an initial site assessment based on the physical buildings themselves. Based on layouts and plans of those spaces and put together a design of what would be required. We also then worked with Shaw when we did when we did the uh the site assessment with them. And we took their recommendations as well and added some additional um capacity based on what they were suggesting. Uh they are experts in the field certainly, so we we added a bit more on top to to compensate for that.
Very good, thank you. Councilor Zalka?
Uh thank you very much, Chair. Um uh point of information, having just completed my amateur radio license requirements, there was quite a bit of study. With respect to the safety of radio equipment, since amateur radio uh and uh and fire and and emergency services, they have to deal with uh.
I just want to stay.
Uh with respect to what's being proposed here.
Yep.
I I have no concerns with the health aspects or any contraventions of Safety Code Six. Uh thank you.
Perfect, thank you. To keep us on track here for time. Um alright, next up, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, worship. The next item on the capital budget uh financial services capital plan is PC harbor replacement. And this is just uh replacement of existing uh PC harbor, which would include docking stations, laptops, monitors. And uh PCs. And so we maintain a detailed list of over two hundred units. And we replace on a five year cycle. Um so that's that's what this is for. The next, the the final item in the financial services capital uh plan is uh budget software for twenty twenty one. Uh to the total of seventy five thousand dollars. Currently, we don't have any budget software. The the real um uh anticipated use of the budget software is to uh share knowledge throughout the organization. Empower departments throughout the organizations to manage their own budget. Uh a- a- and also um have access to the information in timely way. Uh these financial plans were prepared with some sophisticated Excel, I call it sophisticated, that's me patting myself on the back. Uh Excel spreadsheets. Uh but really, the the directors, they don't they only have access to this information through me. And that that is a problem, I think, when it comes to knowledge sharing.
Thank you.
So your worship, if it uh pleases Chair to carry on, Fire Services Capital Budget is next and uh we will scroll to page.
I'll just make sure there's no other questions on those items before we move on.
Thank you.
Okay. I think it does it. Thank you very much, C D Sky, for coming in tonight. It's a long, long waiting to get to you. Much appreciated.
Your worship, it's uh the police capital budget first, which is a simpler bu- budget. Okay, your worship, so we are on page uh seventy seven of the uh draft financial plan. The first capital project in the police service capital plan is replacement of vehicles. Uh the police vehicles are funded by an annual transfer to reserve. And there's a number of patrol vehicles as well as administrated administrative vehicles that are uh anticipated in in the next five years. As mentioned, the 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 replacement of the vehicles is uh funded by an annual um contribution of forty five thousand dollars to the reserves. And uh um although it it appears like for the next five years, the average is over that amount. There are years subsequent to twenty twenty four where there won't be any purchases, so it 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 averages out. The next capital budget uh in the police services capital plan is uh computer equipment replacement. And uh the the Oak Bay Police Department currently contracts with uh Sanage, I believe. For um uh information technology support. And they populate this budget according to the recommendations from their contractors there. The final two uh uh capital uh plan uh projects in the police services capital plan. Are for uh minor equipment, one for traffic enforcement and police building, minor police building repairs a year through year. So that's the police uh services capital plan.
Are there any questions, Councilor Appleton?
Uh thank you, your worship, uh and through you to staff, mo- more of a comment, but I would just say that I I think. Uh Chief Brynton has has heard discussion around the table multiple times and it's referenced in this in this report about uh exploring options. For uh lower impact vehicles uh and and has clearly said to council and and understood. That, you know, the vehicle that suits his purposes and his needs is not yet available. Uh I guess I would just reiterate and and request that I I've I'm I'm hopeful. That as discussions happen with providers of the the equipment that you you require, chief. Uh that that essentially that information is being conveyed to them saying, uh you know, council, our our council and our community. Would like this option made available to to them and that this is a request that's going up. Hopefully, if the more times the request is made and that's communicated to the folks that provide this equipment. Then you will have that type of vehicle uh come available to you.
Thank you, Councilor Appleton. No other questions? Chief Brynton, you've been sitting through the whole meeting. I'd hate to not give you a chance to say something before.
Thank you.
That's like your third meeting you've been sitting through.
Just on that comment, um I think the police community as a whole are are probably pushing that. Our next um. Like, for instance, the Ford Explorers as of this year are coming out of a hybrid model that would suit our purposes. That we may look at uh for the next patrol vehicle, that sort of thing. But as far as fully electric and those types of options. Uh I do think that uh there is probably an international push, uh if not uh North American to to move forward. And I think you will see that day.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No. Thank you. Mr. Payne?
Thank you, your worship. We're now on page seventy eight of the draft financial plan of Fire Services Capital Plan. We'll walk through most of these uh line by line. There are a a number of projects here that are really related. And and um uh depend on decisions to each other. So the the uh fire chief has prepared um a a report, which council's in receipt of, and we'll discuss those uh together. So the first item on the capital plan is the replacement of the engine with light rescue for one point three million dollars. And uh again, I'm going to relate this to the other projects that are are related. Really, what is anticipated in in the financial plan here is that um the engine with light rescue replacement. Would be moved from its current location um to the apparatus bay where the the ladder truck is. And that's because the current engine uh wouldn't fit into the 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 current uh area. Um and then the ladder truck would be replaced in twenty twenty one or take a couple of years to do that. And moved into a separate storage apparatus. So we're talking about a portable uh apparatus storage bay. So you can sort of visualize how one decision um relates to another decision. And in order to uh fit the engine replacement in the apparatus bay that currently houses the ladder. There would still need to be two hundred fifty thousand dollars approximately uh worth of um upgrades to to fit to fit that in there as well. So I'll um I I'm going to go through the other items first, but I just wanted to paint a uh an overview of those three items. That we'll discuss uh together. So the the next item on the uh Fire Services Capital Plan is the fire uh personal protective equipment. The fire department has historically um provisioned replacement of this PPE uh within its operating budget. But what we did this year was we took the annual contribution to the fire equipment reserve. And we increased it to what we consider to be a sustainable level to pay for all fire apparatus and and equipment. So this would be paid for out of the uh the reserve, which is one reason why you see the reserve going negative. Because the previous scope of that reserve didn't include equipment. In order to increase that funding, we took a portion of the annual um infrastructure renewal funding that council increased uh over the years. And we dedicated it. So that's the mechanism there. Okay, uh so the fire personal protective equipment, um you know, I I asked the Fire Services Department. Uh what what makes sense more operation operationally for you? Do we want to replace the these units as we go? Or is it more economical and more uh makes more sense from operational standpoint to do it all at once? They said do it all at once. So that's why uh it's uh consolidated one budget there. The next uh capital uh item there is the fire hall interior painting for twenty three thousand dollars. Get a minor item that you may want to just include in operating budget going forward, but it was something that was requested at last year's budget meeting and approved. Uh part last year's budget deliberation is and approved for twenty twenty. So so there it is. The emergency uh generator, right now the the district um has two uh generators. And they're both at their end of their life. They're forty four years old and thirty five years old respectively. So this would replace those with a with a new uh generator.
Sorry, Mr. Payne, I I believe we, didn't we not approve that last year? And this is just carrying it forward into this year as that was happening here?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the the price tag has changed.
Uh the brace tag has changed slightly with with cost increases, but it was uh it wasn't carried forward. It was approved for for twenty twenty when it was approved.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Uh the next capital item is is the fire station alerting uh alerting and display. Um currently, the dispatch system goes through an analog system. And the uh one of the main partners in our dispatch partners, District of Sanage, is upgrading their dispatch system to a digital system. So this would uh bring that in alignment. Um it would increase a quicker turnout times. And it already has built in redund- redundancies into it as well. And also, I was talking to the chief this morning and he mentioned that um uh dispatches that would go out to Sanage and Oakby at the same time. Simultaneously would go out to both organizations rather than dispatching one organization and dispatching the other organization. So um so improve efficiency and and um dispatch times there. So I'm going to skip past the portable apparatus storage bay, because again, that's something that should be discussed in concert with the other two major um projects here. Uh s- the emergency program vehicle is slated for replacement. I believe it's thirty years old uh here as well. So um um I I believe the um so it's just part of our replacement program. The E O C Equipment and Training Capital Project, uh we discussed this earlier. But this this project is uh completely grant grant funded. Um the 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 grant applications were actually recently submitted by our uh emergency coordinator. And that goes for the emergency support services equipment as well. That funding is provided through the U B C M. The C C A N um based uh training prop uh is a a new item, which council uh hasn't heard of until uh this year. And that uh essentially would provide what is a, does everyone know what I'm talking about when we say C? I had to Google what it what it looked like when it was originally proposed and it and it's essentially a uh um, you know, it's a. It's a shipment container. That's right. And that would be used for training purposes. Smoke uh smoke detectors, uh spraying uh water and uh other fire training purposes. Moving down to the thermal imaging protective equipment capital budget in the amount of sixty six thousand dollars for uh twenty twenty one. I can just pull that up here. And again, this this is replacement of the existing thermal imaging uh uh equipment. And and we will incorporate that into our um capital plan on an ongoing basis, much like uh P P and other related equipment. In twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four, the the uh the vehicle, the administrative vehicles are due for replacement. And uh the the chief has indicated that he will look at um electric vehicle options for that in those years. In twenty twenty two, the technical rescue protective equipment is due for replacement i- in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And again, that's replacing existing equipment. So it's been integrated into the the plan. And the same can be said about the gas detection protective equipment in twenty twenty three and the vehicle extrication protective equipment in uh twenty twenty four. Contrary to popular belief, cars are are getting stronger actually. So the jaws of life need to keep up with it with that strength. So now uh we'll we'll discuss and I'll and I'll turn it over to the chief if he has additional comments. Um the major uh capital expenditures in this plan involve the replacement of the engine, the replacement of the ladder truck. And the uh appar- the the apparatus storage that would have to go with it.
Before we get to that, I just want to ask if there's any questions of this body of any of the line items. Yes, Councilor Green?
Um not a question, just a quick comment. I wonder if for the benefit of the public, who who also read this report. And I know it's minute detail, but where where you were talking about the C C A N, and I wouldn't have known what that was either. Is it possible to somewhere footnote that or or footnote these these terms that that people might not under- understand? I don't mean to create a lot of extra work, but I'm I'm, you know, in the ones that are.
Let's let the staff take that away as an as a suggestion and we'll better work on it. Yeah, sounds good. Councilor Zalka?
Uh thank you, Chair. Through you to the seat to our CFO. Um I I definitely can see why uh you're dipping dipping into reserve funds, because these are, these are big, big ticket items. Uh but I I can't see how the reserve funds are being uh refreshed. Uh if you could point that out, please.
Yes, uh thank you. Through your worship, I'm going to just scroll up to the reserve uh section, which demonstrates this in a high level. So here we are. So on on page sixty nine provides a a bit more detail. And and you'll see that the first graph demonstrates the trajectory of our reserve. Uh should we continue to provide the hundred ninety thousand dollars that was funding previously? And um. Yeah. Uh you know, one thing that that we could provide that that provides a, is a longer term perspective here, because I've got that. I've I've prepared that information. I've prepared that that graph and that's that's not here, but it does show um uh us going back into positive territory after a number of years.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions, Councilor Neen?
Very minor question. Why is the picture of the fire truck got Parksville Fire Rescue on it?
No, the the trucks, the trucks themselves are are, the specs are are always quite different. They provided that as a courtesy to us and we just wanted to have a picture, yeah.
Councilor Zalka?
Um I I question through you to 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 um probably the the fire chief. Um if this whole plan was delayed by one year, uh what would that do? If this whole plan was delayed by one year, what would that do to your department and your plans, please?
Mr. Hughes?
It's it's a, it's a, through the chair, it's a good question. It's fairly complex as all these things are, because there's so many interrelations. Right now, our, as as seen in the report, our our ladder is going to be coming up on twenty years in two years from now, at which time we need to replace it. They're about eighteen months to a two-year build time, which would put us over. Now, there there are some complications to that. There certainly would be an element of risk as far as serviceability for the equipment. We currently with our ladder truck, even though it's only at eighteen years old, in the past four years, we've suffered with significant downtime with this piece of apparatus, any anywhere from seven percent of the year in the last four years being unavailable to over fifty percent of the year to do with with parts replacements and issues with serviceability, which of course, we plan to address with another piece of equipment. So it would be risk. There is also within that our, as I pointed out in the report, some fire underwriter surveys, there can be some impacts on there. If we don't have a plan for replacement, the specific amounts, the specific numbers that would result from from one's piece of apparatus getting that much older. I can't give you a definitive number, but it certainly would expose us to more more risk.
Thank you. Any other questions? I just had one quick question on here, and that is the the CCAN training question. This is something that the the fire department has lived without for a long time. I'm assuming has used other partner, neighboring jurisdictions for equipment. I guess the question just should be, can we not continue on with some sort of partnership agreement? There's very specialized equipment, not used that frequently, I would assume, but Chief Hughes?
So so your worship, the tower we currently use is another another legacy piece of equipment that that is very, very challenging. We used to use that in combination with the guide hall and the scout hall. The scout hall has replaced all their flooring, which makes it very difficult for firefighters to go in there with their equipment. The guide hall, the flooring, again, had asbestos, and they had to keep coating it so that we've always been prevented from going in there. And the same thing is modern firefighting and practical skills inside a residential structure where young children sleep just isn't practical anymore.
That's a good answer. Thank you. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just looking at the photograph of the portable apparatus storage. Could could just perhaps, could we have an explanation on where this?
Yes, let's get to the big stuff now. I think we've hammered the small stuff. Let's go to the big stuff. Are we good? We're, yeah, we're going to go through to Mr. Chief Hughes. We're going to continue on with the with the equipment, the large equipment, or Mr. Payne?
I was just going to invite the chief if he had additional comments that relate to the report that he
Well, I think this is the the trucks, the 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 building, et cetera.
So I'll, I'll, I'll speak to the the report itself. We find ourselves at a crossroads right now with two large pieces of apparatus that require replacement, and a over thirty-five-year legacy practice of replacing equipment based on the fire station. I started in nineteen ninety-two, and we had an old T-Bow ladder at that time, which was the eighty-five footer. And it had been shortened and re-engineered, and the handling characteristics, maneuverability, and I would say I always hesitate to say the safety of the apparatus, but it was a challenge to drive. I will say that, and to stop. Because it was shortened, and and it just wasn't a purpose-built piece of apparatus, because they couldn't fit it into the station. Subsequent to that, as I pointed out in in my report, we, future apparatus in the same way have all been altered, probably with sort of our, the best piece of apparatus that we had was our ladder, in that it wasn't, it was an off-the-rack unit, as small as we could get it. Plus, we we raised the the bay door, and we still had to cut off a section of the ladder. So we ended up with, you know, significantly less reach and versatility with that apparatus, and unfortunately, it's proven to be not our most reliable piece of equipment, unfortunately, as well. They they have become very complex. This proposal to have a a portable building, and and through the chair, I'll address Counselor Patterson's question, where will it go? We haven't come to a final decision on exactly where it goes. I will speak to the question when I look at that picture, and it looks like an industrial piece of equipment that belongs at the airport. And I can see that. It will be slightly smaller. There won't be a pushout to it, and that will not, certainly not be the color scheme. But in order for us, for two pieces of apparatus that we need to purchase in the near future, to have them purpose-built and service the community properly, be, allow us to contribute to our mutual aid obligations, and to really allow that apparatus to move at some time, I imagine, in the next twenty years into a new fire station. We we need to make, we do need to make a decision on what we're going to do now, and and we felt it was only reasonable to make sure that council was fully aware of of all the challenges that we're facing right now, and and how we can we can protect the next two pieces of apparatus we have, and somewhat future-proof them with this proposal.
Thank you, Chief Hughes. Are there questions? I guess, Counselor Appleton, then Green, then
Thank you, your worship, and and through you to staff. I I think council has heard me raise the, raise the issue before of that I just have, and with absolute respect to fire services, and that they're absolute, the absolute priority is getting them what they need to do the job, and that that's just understood. But I've raised the issue of of sort of the the increase in size of fire apparatus, and and the need to have ever larger pieces of apparatus. So I just wondered whether the chief might be able to comment on that, and 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 I've heard from the chief in previous meetings, and I and I and I totally appreciate that we have a very limited amount of apparatus, so there's a lot of gear that has to go on each individual machine. But just with the amount of equipment that that you're being required to carry, there is this drive towards progressively larger and larger apparatus, and so I see this as an abiding problem for municipalities. So I was just wondering whether the chief could comment on that.
Chief Hughes?
Through you, Chair. Yes, that's, and that's an excellent question. Certainly, within the within the engines, which are, you know, with the pump without the ladder, there is a move to become somewhat shorter. Our height is really where we find our challenges, and and it's the height of the hall. Certainly, within a few of our bays, we do have some length concerns with the engines. The ladder, again, that's a, that's a big length, length issue, but also primarily its height. And and we just have real, have a real challenge with the height. There is certainly a move to some shorter apparatus, shorter wheelbase to more easily wheel around within the municipalities. Not so much with the ladder tire, where I'll say ladder truck for ease of following, which we refer to as quints. But certainly, we are always looking at at ways to certainly lighten the load, because if we're sending people out to the first responder calls, if we can, you know, if we can transport the majority of that equipment on a larger ladder truck, we'd much rather do that than be carrying all the equipment to our F R cars.
Counselor Appleton, do you have more?
Thank you. I'll just ask a couple more, and then I'll let other people speak. I'm just, sorry, I'm just particularly interested in this one subject. Does our mutual, and through you to staff, does our mutual aid agreement mandate that when we go to replace equipment, that we replace it with a certain size, in that if we chose to replace the ladder truck with exactly the, with a new ladder truck of exactly the same dimensions, would we be meeting the standard of our mutual aid agreement, or does it mandate that we have a hundred-foot ladder?
Chief Hughes?
Through you, Chair. Certainly, currently, it does not mandate in any way that we have a ladder truck of that size. That being said, our core for agreement that we currently operate under, all of our partners have hundred-plus ladders in their inventory, including a squimole fire.
Thank you, and just and just one other further question. Just in terms of, and and you've made the point, and clearly in the report, that there's the insurance underwriter scores that are based on the on the nature of the trucks, and so with specific reference to the ladder, it's it's based on the the score, the good score, is based on having the right age of apparatus, rather than having a one hundred versus a smaller apparatus.
Chief?
Through the chair, through you, Chair. That's a good, good question. It's actually a combination. So an apparatus that's within that that twenty-year window practically, as well as the ladder should be designed for the tallest building in your municipality, which would be, in our case, a hundred-foot ladder. Now, that does assist with with our our FUS ratings. How that all trickles down to actual insurance rates is is very complex. But I can say with a hundred-foot ladder, regardless of whether you're going to a a ten-story building, or you're going to a four-story building, there's many three- and four-story buildings that we cannot access many areas from due to the, based on the distance from the street. FUS is concerned about fire conflagration, and being able to fight fires to keep them from growing when they're very large, and that's why they want the height. Whereas we are certainly concerned about that, but we're also very concerned about life safety and being able to access all those areas on our apartments that that are accessible with a hundred foot, but certainly, we're short with less than a seventy.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Counselor Green?
You'll probably call me a cheerleader, but I am a cheerleader for these services. We had a house fire in nineteen ninety-eight. I will not forget that, and how important these first responders were to us in saving our home and our lives. And secondly, whenever you call nine-one-one, I haven't done it a lot, but I've done it twice now in Oak Bay, and the response is incredible. So I I guess I'm feeling that we would be remiss if we tried to piecemeal this and and try and band-aid it, or whatever you want to call it. Like our buildings, some of this equipment is really old and and needs to be replaced. And I I think I trust the professionals who are having to use that equipment every day. I trust them to call the shots on when they need replacing and when they don't. And again, it's back to health and safety.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you, I I come back to this portable building, and granted, you said that it'll look different than on the pictures, not not quite like this. But could you perhaps just explain the the operation of it? I know the fire hall has the automatic doors that 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 go up. Is this, would this building be somehow connected into the fire hall? So if the alarms went off, like, what happens with this building? Does the door go up automatically, or do staff have to? I'm just wondering how it operates.
Through you, Chair, Counselor Patterson. I I love technical questions, so I, but I am cognizant of time here. With the new proposed fire hall alerting system, my understanding is that there would be the ability when the ladder was dispatched to be able to arrange so that that door would go up, even when the building was somewhat remote from the station. So there would be control from there, and that this new fire hall alerting system would assist with that.
Thank you. I just, for my clarification, you said you're still working on location for where this would go, but are you for the sound of that being remote, considering the possibility of putting it more towards the back of the parking lot as opposed to beside, immediately beside the building?
So so there'll obviously be a consultative process here. And we've, we've had preliminary talks with with building and planning, as well as engineering and police are also on the radar and concerned about where this goes.
Fair enough. Counselor Braithwaite?
Thanks, and through you, Chair. Just a quick question. On as far as the height of these vehicles goes, and you talk about there's a height restriction because of the opening at the fire hall. Was there ever, not ever conversation to dig down so that they, it could get in, or?
Chief?
Through you, Chair, to Counselor Braithwaite. We have looked at digging down the two nineteen sixty-five bays that are there. Unfortunately, again, becomes very complex. They're on suspended slabs, because there is the old civil defense room underneath. So that becomes a very expensive proposition.
Such an interesting place we live in. We have, we have about three minutes left to to wrap this up, so as Counselor Appleton, do you have something to add?
Just very briefly, thank you, your worship. The the, in the options here, option two relates, just includes a line item for a ladder services agreement, which I'm I'm assuming has something to do with us not, in that option, there would not be a hundred-foot ladder. There would, there would be a shorter ladder. Do we currently have a ladder, do we, do we need, because we don't have a hundred-foot ladder now, do we currently operate a ladder services agreement like this?
Through you, Chair. No, we, we currently don't, and I want to be, because we're in negotiations for a new mutual aid agreement coming up. I'd like to, you know, I would like to be sensitive about where I go with that, but we don't currently have a ladder ladder services agreement. However, with with two hundred-story buildings, plus the others, maintaining that seventy-five-foot ladder, we certainly would want to make sure that we were, we were prepared and had the proper responding apparatus to that area, should our partners have any issue with that.
Okay. Counselor Green, or Counselor Braithwaite, you still have the floor?
So I would just like to move
There's no movement required at this point. These are all things in the plan, unless you're making changes to it. Oh, does that report have options in it?
There are two options, though.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
Okay, I would like to move option A, please, from the report.
Second?
Move to second. Is there any further discussion on that? I'm going to use at last minute. This is one of those ones, this building has had struggles for a long time in terms of meeting its serviceable uses, so has the fire building. These sorts of large external appendages, because we can't put things inside of buildings, the fact that we can't achieve certain basic requirements for the police as well in some of, in the building. This may need to be bumped up a little bit in terms of what our our planning is for the emergency services building as part of our our plan, because I think this is going to highlight the fact that we can't just kind of keep band-aiding these pieces when we start having these other larger buildings popping up, and they're building, having empty bays as a result. So thank you for the motion here. Any other discussion on the, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed? And I had a quick chat with Counselor Ne before this meeting started, and she had a suggestion of the possibility of having some more pictures of people in this document, if possible. It's just, there's a, there's a lot of pictures of scenery, but not a lot of people of pictures, and that sort of it is true that there may be some benefit to that. Some people just leave that as a last word tonight. Make the request that there's any possibility of adding some, some people.
There's no kids, there's no youth, and there's no arts. I I do appreciate this is about finance, but still, the premise of this community is about people, but so if there's some way to integrate that, yeah.
If there's, if it's, if there's available photos that we can use, then we just consider that as a possibility. All right, motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Second, all those in favor? Opposed, not opposed?